Now? All right. Good evening, Select Board. I am calling our meeting to order on February 25th at 6:31 PM. All right, so we've got a pretty busy tonight that's going to probably be budget centric when we get to that piece of it. Okay, so we are going to start out with two poll hearings for National Grid. We have John from National Grid here. Yeah, I did it again, didn't I? Okay, sorry, I'm gonna backtrack. Do we have any public comment to start out the meeting? Vanessa? Okay, all right. So now, moving on, we have two poll hearings. These poll hearings were scheduled for last meeting and National Grid did not come, and so they're here tonight in person. So hello, John. And so, Mark?
So the legal notice for this hearing, let's see, first one is...
I did. There was no...
First one's Parkerville. Southborough Select Board shall hold a public hearing Tuesday, February 4th, 2025 at 6:30 PM, which was continued to this evening, February 25th at 6:30 PM in the McCall of Hearing Room. Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. To consider a petition by Mass Electric Company, DBA National Grid, to install a pole on Parkerville Road at the intersection of Fox Hill Drive. Meeting may also be listened to or viewed by the public through a link located at ma-southborough.civicplus.com/674/virtualmeetings. Southborough Select Board.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
Ready to go, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, John, for coming. So let's start off with the Parkerville Road poll hearing first. So why don't you explain to everyone by coming either to that microphone or to this one, wherever you're more comfortable. You sit there, you stand there, so if that influences you, and explain to us what you want to, what National Grid wants to do at the Parkerville Road.
Okay, thank you.
Site.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John. I'm representing National Grid and I'm coming from the address 245 South Main Street in Hopdell. The reason why we decided...
John, hold on just a minute, we'll get this fixed. It's very unfortunate what your mic is doing.
Is S-A-M.
Okay, is there a number on there, any place?
There's a number. Oh yeah, number 13.
Fifty?
One thirty, fifteen.
Now, so now try it again.
Yes. The reason why National Grid wants to install this new pole is to gain height for their addresses 184 and 186. Height for their services. And National Grid has the standard. This is gonna be, this service is gonna come from the pole across the street. So the new pole is gonna be across the street, it's gonna be towards these two addresses which I just mentioned, 84 and 86. 184 and 186. We're gonna increase the height because I think it's, there's a hill over there, so we have to put a taller pole, forty feet. And that's the reason why we are there, and then we're gonna put an anchor as well. We'll try our best to make sure the anchor doesn't go to anybody's property, put on the downside. That's all we're gonna do.
Try your best or you will make sure it doesn't.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a new pole.
It's a new pole.
That needs to be higher than what's there now.
No, there's no pole over there, just to give them good service.
This is a whole new pole that is going to be the right height?
Right, the right height, to give them better service and to be perfect for the road because seventeen feet high, so it won't be, won't have a loop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
No, you are good with the next, next pole?
Well, let's do them one at a time in case there are anybody in the audience on either road that want to speak to us. Let's do, let's do this one first. So we'll ask questions if we have them, and then we'll see if anybody's in the audience, and then, then we'll go on to, we'll vote on that one, then we'll go on to the next one. Anybody having questions on this one, Sam?
Yes, I do.
Of course, I, so I'm looking at you.
I couldn't tell, is there a stone wall up there? Because if there's a stone wall, then you gotta be really careful in terms of the planning board on scenic roads, which this is, I think.
And...
Needs to get involved with the process.
So the stone wall is towards the properties or, because we're not gonna go past the property line?
Stone wall could be on town property, they usually are. And so we've got a bylaw in the town that protects scenic roads, so if you're going to touch a stone wall that's on a scenic road, you have to have the permission of the planning board to do it. So I think your question is, are you gonna touch the stone wall?
First, is there a stone wall there? I couldn't quite tell from looking. If there's a stone wall, then you gotta figure out, is your pole location gonna interfere with that or does it require construction that would disrupt the stone wall somehow?
Okay.
So you gotta go to the planning board.
All right, since I didn't design this, but I'll get back to the designer who designed this and to confirm, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. It's a little hard to tell now with snow on the ground there.
Well, we can tell, we have our maps, which can tell what is underneath and what is...
Okay.
Yeah.
Vanessa, any way you could pull that up and see?
I took a picture of it, right? And it's hard to tell because of a couple reasons. There's snow covering the stone wall and it's one of those classic...
So there is a stone wall there?
It looks to me more like a stone wall.
Disorganized stone wall, yeah.
It's almost certainly a stone wall.
Yeah.
Some dilapidated floor.
Sir, if you're familiar with this, I could show you a picture and if that's helpful?
No, I didn't, I didn't decide, I'm just representing.
He says here to get the hearing done.
So I'm, I'm fine with it as long as whatever stone wall issue is...
It's not, either it's not touched, or if it's gotta be touched, they've gotta get permission.
The planning board, yeah.
Do you approve it on the condition?
Yeah.
Usually, our designers, before they make this decision, we have another department which is a big safe, dig safe. They go through to approve that it's right, it's okay to dig.
But they don't usually...
I'm not sure Dig Safe would deal with stone walls though. So we're gonna approve this with a condition, which is since there does look like there's a stone wall, that National Grid has to either confirm that they're not going to touch the stone wall to put the pole in, or if they're gonna need to touch a stone wall, they're gonna have to go through a process with the planning board in town to get approval for it. So that, that's what we're gonna condition this with.
Touch means either construction process, so if you gotta park a truck or something where the stone wall is, disturbing it triggers the planning board review.
Okay.
We're looking on Google Earth or Maps or something?
It looks like they're, if I had to guess, oh, I think, I think I see where the pole is. Hang on.
The pole be, can you see the town line?
New pole, how can you see where the pole is?
Well, the pole is across from the existing pole.
No wall.
Yeah, it'll be right across pole number sixty-eight.
Well, it depends, what's the pole number?
The pole...
Is it thirty-nine?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, hang on.
Thirty-eight, right across thirty-eight.
We can get you an answer in thirty seconds.
All right, we're on the case there.
Right across thirty-eight, that's where the new pole is gonna go.
Yeah, I think there is a stone wall there.
Does anyone else have any other questions while we're trying to figure this out?
It's across from thirty-eight.
No hands up in the audience.
There does not appear to be a stone wall there.
Okay.
At least on Google Earth, street view.
All right, so that's good news for you.
Thank you.
Have that caveat in.
Right, we'll, we'll put the caveat, but it looks like it may not be needed.
I mean, there's a rock, but there's no stone wall.
Okay, so you understand what we're saying?
Yes.
You gotta just make sure you deal with stone wall properly, if there's a stone wall there.
That's one rock. A rock does not a wall make.
How old is it, right?
Well, Al, it depends on who you ask. Okay, so does anyone have any other questions about this one?
Another, okay. Also, I think that we have approved design money. We have approved design money for a sidewalk which would go on Parkerville running up to Middle Road, right?
Yes.
And, and this is on the side of the...
Well, you say run up to Middle Road, it runs up to Finn. I don't remember where it starts. So to me, it starts in middle and goes to Finn, not runs up to... Are you talking about going from Route 92 to middle? I think it goes from middle to, to the school.
Last May, when we approved using ARPA money for designs, that the design was from where it currently terminates south of the Pike by Finn to run up to Middle Road.
Okay. You, you're saying up, I'm saying down, so down to Middle Road. You're going, okay, you're right up, because you're going north, okay, so you're going up. Okay, so I agree with you, that's exactly what we approved.
So then, does it also make sense to suggest that it be located...
So as to not interfere with sidewalk location?
So this is what we're going to need you to do. We're not trying to make this harder than it needs to be, but we need for National Grid to confer with our DPW superintendent. His name is Bill Kundiff, C-U-N-D-I-F-F. And we can give you his, his contact information. We have a sidewalk planned in this area.
Okay.
It's not done yet, the engineering's being done, but we wanna make sure that what you're doing doesn't interfere with what Bill's got planned and vice versa.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll get, if you can, do you know how to, do you guys know how to reach John?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get you and Bill in touch in the next day or so. Okay, so we'll also make this motion, condition on you talking to Mr. Kundiff and making sure that the sidewalk is not an issue as far as what you're trying to do. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else with any questions for John before we vote on this one? Okay. Vanessa?
No hands up.
Okay. You know, there were two families here last time, and I don't remember which one they were for, here for, so hopefully they're, they're okay. Okay, so we will approve this one, we'll deal with the second one, then we will come out of the public hearing. Okay, so Sam, you wanna make a motion to do the, and do the caveats?
I move that we approve this subject to first, company determining, confirming that there is not a stone, stone wall there, or if there is, to place the pole so as to either not interfere or to get a permit from the planning board as may be required. And second, to connect or to speak with the DPW superintendent to confirm that the town sidewalk plans for that location are not, not conflict with the pole location, and if, if they do, to position the pole out of the way of the sidewalk plan.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Because that's five zero. Okay, so now let's move on to Pine Hill Road.
Okay. The next one is ten, it involves ten Pine Hill Road. Ten Pine Hill Road were getting service from the pole across the street, and the span was too long to the point that the loop was sagging. So National Grid decided to put the pole towards, to the side of ten Pine Hill Road, the address of ten Pine Hill Road, to minimize the sagging. And that's the reason now we have another pole to the side. So now the distance is short and the height is perfect for the service, and we increased the height of the pole as well.
So this is a new pole?
It's a new pole across the street.
Across the street, yeah.
Yeah, just to minimize the distance, because it was a long distance. We have a distance maximum of 150 feet. This was a little bit more, and it was because of the weather conditions sometimes, wintertime, and the duration of the, with the wires, the loop kept increasing and it becomes hazard for traffic, for everything else. So we minimized that, and now we're hoping this will be perfect.
So you got two of the five members who live on that road? So we actually know that road well, and let me just say this, that road's a mess right now. You wouldn't believe what the winter has done to the side of that road. So it, it's, you know, you will definitely have some issues, I think, as far as putting this pole in. That's also one that is in the middle of being engineered to have a lot of work done on the whole road, including sidewalks, but not necessarily there for sidewalks. So we're gonna ask you to talk to Bill Kundiff about that one also, just to make sure that he weighs in on what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay?
I think there's a stone wall there too, actually.
I don't. Do you think there's a stone wall there? I don't think there is.
Pardon?
I don't think there's a stone wall there, a ten?
Uh, it's quite possible.
Really? Okay, there is.
I'll tell you in two minutes.
I take it back, Andrew, so there's a stone wall there too, so you're gonna have a long motion here too. Okay, so same issues, talk to Bill and deal with the stone wall, right? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I've looked at that, that wire is hanging, it's a long run.
I know.
And it's hanging very low, and it definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay, anybody else on the Select Board have any questions before we see if there's any public comment on this one? Marguerite, you have a question?
No hands up.
Anybody, Vanessa? No, no hands up? Okay, so Sam, can you do it again? Good luck, Richard, making this motion, writing this motion down.
I don't remember. Move that we approve the application as proposed, subject to, one, confirming that pole location will not interfere with any existing stone wall there. If it does, getting either moving the location or getting permit from the planning board for that location. Second, coordinating with the DPW superintendent to make sure that the pole location does not interfere with sidewalk or engineering plans for road updates there, to basically keep it out of the way of any proposed construction.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right, so I think we're done there, so motion to close the public hearing. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have Ollie here to ask us to transfer a Class II Auto Dealer License to his new LLC, which I believe is called Central. What?
There is a stone wall.
Yeah, I thought I saw one.
Okay, we're moving on here. Okay, sorry, Ollie. Okay, so we are here to discuss transferring a Class II Auto Dealer License to your company, and I assume you are Central Motors Group LLC?
Central Motor Group, yeah.
Okay, singular?
Yes.
Okay, all right, got it. Okay, so you wanna come on up? You can either, what? Yes. Guess you need to come there, you can come there, whichever you're more comfortable with. Mark?
Southborough Select Board shall hold a public hearing Tuesday, February 23rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. McCall of Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Southborough. To consider an application from Central Motors Group LLC for a Class II Used Car Dealer's License Transfer located at 349 Turnpike Road in Southborough. Public hearing may be viewed or listened to by the public through a link located at ma-southborough.civicplus.com/674/virtualmeetings. All interested parties are encouraged to view and/or participate, Southborough Select Board.
Thank you. So welcome. So why don't you tell us what you wanna do here?
Okay, so I had an experience on car dealership before. I used to work for a manager, and I had also partnership chip two in a different town. So I liked to be in this business, and I found that place, it's really nice, and it's really like kinda small, but it's good for me because I don't have any partner. So I wanted to be here, like to have better used cars in this industry, you know, because I go like most of the auctions, find good cars. So I wanted to serve a better service for people, for good cars, for used cars. Also, I'm planning to be on the service side too, in the short term. So I, I've never lived in Southborough before, but I know this town, I like this town. I know I'm gonna be really busy there, so that's what my plan is.
So this is your only business?
That's my only business, yeah.
Okay, we'll be, all right. Al?
No questions, Al, welcome to Southborough, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Marguerite?
No questions.
Sam?
Same, good luck.
Thank you.
Andrew?
So there's an existing operation there, and you're looking to just kinda continue, same type of operation?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Neither do I, but we do have a resident here that I believe would like to speak. Come on up, Jack. Introduce yourself.
I'm John Bottalini Jr., Four Wyeth Circle. I own the property behind you. And I'm sorry I haven't talked to you, but I did talk to Tony.
Okay.
So Tony is the landowner. So I have a couple of questions, and I have no problem with this business. Is this the exact same business, same amount of cars, same hours of operation? Is that, is all the same?
That's what I plan, that's what my plan is. So I'm gonna have around like same amount of car, and...
It says forty-six cars.
Forty-six, yeah, I don't know if I'll have that much for now. Because, you know, like the space, space can hold forty-six cars. Yes, that is correct, that's what my plan is, maybe after like five months. But for the beginning, I won't have that much cars, so it's gonna take a little bit of time for me.
The fellow that was there has been a good neighbor, there, there hasn't been a problem. They never go out in back of the building, there's no trash out back, there's no storage of anything out back.
No.
There's no, and that's really what I'm concerned about. It says forty-six cars and then five cars for parking. Hours of operation seem to be ten to seven, except for one day, and I forget which one.
Yeah, the Sunday, Sunday will be closed.
Yeah, Sunday will be closed.
Yeah.
And I'm all right with that, it's just that I don't want the junk cars being pushed out back and then my people out behind, that live behind there.
Yeah.
Callin' me, and then I have to call you.
Yeah.
What do you have right behind it?
Duplex.
I have a duplex.
Yeah.
Okay, you own the Nance property too, right?
I do.
Okay, and Nance is right next to this on...
No, Nance is not.
It's close.
It's close, there's actually, there's him.
Yep.
And then there's the fence, granite, residential, everything business. And then there is Nance.
Okay, and then your duplex is right behind this?
I own...
Faces like...
I own a, I, I own all the property all around him.
Okay.
Except for the, the fence place. So I, I have about twelve acres, my property wraps all around.
I guess I just don't know, so do you get to your property from Flag?
Yes.
Or from Route 9?
My property comes from Flag.
Okay, all right, okay. All right.
And I, I'm...
Yeah, I can, I can, I can promise you, you won't see much junk cars over there because I'm gonna mostly be focusing on selling cars rather than repairing. So that's why I don't think I'll have junk cars over there, it's not gonna be, yeah.
Okay, because I mean, the dumpster and nothing, nothing was out back.
Yeah.
You know, it's kinda in the buffer zone anyway, so you probably couldn't do anything there anyway. But I just wanted to make sure, I, I saw the packet, the packet looked fine to me. I just wanted to make sure that it's the same as what was there.
Yes, exactly, that's what's gonna be.
I don't even know that, I met the guy once, and he's been there a long time.
Yeah, the Michael, yeah.
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 He was fine. So...
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be the same, and I can promise you, you won't see any junk.
Everything that's attached to this license doesn't show anything in the backyard.
Okay, so that's your concern, is the back, keep it clean, don't put anything, junk cars?
Yeah.
And I'm happy.
Okay, so who is Tony?
Tony Medry.
Tony is the landlord.
Okay, so his last name is...
He owns TNL.
TNL.
So that, that Tony, I figured it's either that Tony or Tony Kwan, so I was trying to...
No, no, it's not Tony Kwan.
So Tony from TNL owns that property?
Yes, TNL owns that property.
Yeah, okay, so we like Tony. Okay, so we, this Select Board really supports our local businesses, we love, we want new businesses, we're glad you're here. So good luck, and I hope that you are successful.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience, Vanessa?
No hands up.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the transfer of the Class II Auto Dealer License to Central Motor Group LLC?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? So can I have a motion to close the public hearing for the transfer of the Class II license?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, who seconded?
Marguerite.
Okay, Marguerite seconded, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, Ollie.
Thank you very much. May I ask one, one question?
Of course.
The, by corporation name is a Central Motor Group LLC. It should be a DBA Central Motors too. So you have it on there?
So you want that on the license?
Yes, I had my business certificate from the town already.
Okay. So we got that? And it's Central Motor, not plural, Central Motor Group LLC?
DBA Central Motors.
Okay, so DBA Central Motors, plural?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's what you want the license to say?
Yes.
All right, so when will his license be ready?
She'll begin working on that tomorrow, so it should be ready in the next day or so. So you just contact Melanie?
Yes, I will.
In our office, she'll take care of you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Welcome to Southborough. So John, are you just hanging around to hear how we do things? Yes, you could go.
Yes.
No, you have to stay for the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So is Melissa in the audience?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so this one should be very easy. So Melissa Shields has applied to join the Youth and Family Services Board, which I personally am very appreciative of. I know Melissa very well, I've known her for a long time, and I highly recommend Melissa, and I'm glad that she is willing to do this. Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
So you wanna tell us a little bit about what you, you, you do and why you're interested in this in particular?
Sure. Thanks for allowing me to join remotely, I, I appreciate that.
Of course.
So, yeah, I had some experience with Youth and Family Services with, with my daughter, and she received a great deal of support from them. And I felt like, I mentioned to Sarah Castle that, you know, one day, whenever my daughter's doing better and like things are on the up and up, I would like to give back and help this upper Youth and Family Services. So I saw that there was a vacancy, and so I decided that I would, you know, offer up the opportunity for me to volunteer if, you know, if they'd be interested in having some support. I do have a lot of experience volunteering and helping in the town of Southborough. I volunteered at all of the public schools, you know, Finn, Woodward, Neary, Trotter, Algonquin. I was on the school council at Neary School, at Trotter School, and I'm currently on the school council at Algonquin right now. I also have experience working with Southborough Recreation. I was one of the founders of the Friends in the Southborough Recreation Department and was president for many years. I also worked for Southborough Recreation for a number of years. Now, I'm currently working at St. Anne Catholic Church as the parish office manager there. And I'm finding that, I'm hoping I have a little more time to do the things that I used to do in terms of volunteering and things like that. I started picking back up that food pantry, I volunteered there for many years, and I took a little bit of time off, so I'm starting back on helping there. And I wouldn't mind helping with the youth commission if they're looking for some support.
Okay, that's a lot. I got to know Melissa when she started the Friends of the Rec Department, and she just did a great job. She was a real hard act to follow, let me just say that. So, anyway, anybody having questions for Melissa? Okay, they're all saying no, Melissa.
Like a good fit. Thank you.
All right, so Sam, you wanna make a motion? Alright, um, so Sam, you wanna make a motion?
Um, okay, just a second. Act two. Yeah. Uh, is this effective immediately? Is that?
Yes, there's a vacancy she's filling.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Melissa Shields to the Youth Commission. Uh, term?
June thirtieth of twenty-seven.
Term six thirty twenty-seven. Okay.
Andrew?
That's it.
Second somebody?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, Melissa, thank you.
Congratulations.
Great, that was easy. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we have another appointment. Um, Jenna Barbary-Glavsky. I hope I said the Barbary right. Is she there?
Okay, next. Yep.
Hi, everyone. Hi.
Good evening. We got two appointments here, right?
Yeah.
Hi Jenna.
Hello.
So you wanna tell us a little bit about, um, why you're interested in, how they're?
This is my daughter, sorry.
A future committee member. So you wanna tell us a little bit about why you're interested in the Conservation Commission?
Yes, I do. So my, uh, my husband and my daughter and I moved to Southborough about two years ago. Hey, Al. Thanks. Um, my husband and my daughter and I moved to Southborough two years ago. Um, so we're a little bit new to town. Um, I previously lived in New Lebanon, New York, where I sat on the Conservation Committee there, um, where we focused on, uh, certifying our town as a green city under some New York State guidelines. Um, we also applied for several state grants to, uh, put in, um, plant trees in wetland areas to support our wetland environment, um, and also put in a townwide composting program while I was there. Um, I'm an environmental science teacher and, uh, I have a master's degree in environmental education, uh, specifically looking at farmland restoration and conservation. And I'm excited about the Conservation Committee. I got to see a little bit of what they do in one of their meetings two, uh, weeks ago, um, really conservation of wetlands and making sure that everyone's following the guidelines.
That's great. Um, you've got a good group there you're joining and the Conservation Agent, Melissa Danza, is also fantastic. So that's great. So where, where do you teach?
Uh, we both, uh, live on campus at Face School and teach at Face School.
Okay. Alright, anybody having questions?
Sounds like a great background for it.
Yeah, sounds like a really perfect background. Al?
No questions.
Andrew?
No questions.
Sam, you wanna make a motion?
You have any questions? Okay, I, I move that we appoint Jenna Barbary-Glavsky to the Conservation Commission, term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, it's a little bit belated, but the Conservation Commission did vote unanimously also to support Jenna's appointment to this committee, so thank you Jenna.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much for doing this.
Don't forget to get sworn in quickly here.
Did you hear what Sam said Jenna?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so you've got, um, I don't know when they meet again, but you've got thirty days to be sworn in with the town clerk, so, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, um, moving on to reports. So we'll start with me. Um, I had a meeting on February eleventh at the Senior Center. I'd been invited a few months ago, um, just to come and talk to the seniors and anything el- anything that was on their mind. I actually thought I was meeting with seniors one at a time, um, but that's not how they did it. It was just a big group of seniors and it was well attended. Um, I don't think there was any empty seats in the room. Um, and I had the most, the reason I wanna do this, I had the most enjoyable time. Um, it was really, I just truly enjoyed it. They were all great. They, um, focused on two big things, which I'm gonna get to the second one in a second. They focused on the Neary Building Project, obviously, a little bit of budget. Um, and then they focused on the structure of the Senior Center. As you know, we talked a couple minutes ago about possibly looking at maybe restructuring Senior Center and Youth and Family Services to try to be more effective. Sam and I were designated to take a look at it. They, I think to a person, do not want anything to change or they want the structure the way it is. Um, they are very happy with it. I mean, this, this was a really good group. Um, they were very polite about it, but they were adamant that they do not want us to go forward looking at, um, anything that would change the current structure. Um, Pam, um, has submitted her resignation. She's going to retire, I believe, April eleventh, correct? So she, that, that, that will need to be addressed, which was, that's in process. But, um, I have basically, um, said I, I'm, I'm fine with the structure. They really don't wanna change. They're very happy with it. So, um, I told Doug Peck that as far as I'm concerned, this is not an issue that I would like to pursue. Um, Sam, you can certainly speak to how you feel at this point, but they, they were, they were unanimously in support of not changing anything as far as the structure. They are very happy with the structure that they have.
I agree at this point.
Okay, alright. Okay, um, so Pam is retiring after, how many years Vanessa?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So she's gonna retire on April eleventh. Um, I, I spoke with her. She, um, she's a little concerned about what she's gonna do afterwards, like a lot of us are when we retire. Um, so we, we may not have seen the last of her. She may come back, um, to, to help out here and there. But she is gonna retire, um, April eleventh, which gives us time to find, um, the appropriate replacement and that process is underway, which we'll probably talk about at the next meeting, I would think, right? Um, the next one, which is very sad, um, Amy Berry, our Assistant Town Clerk, um, is, has resigned, but for a very good reason. She's gonna be the Town Clerk of the Town of Grafton. Um, so we're all very happy for her. Um, we know what a right hand, is Jimmy in here? I thought he was. Right hand, left hand to Mr. Haggerty, she is.
He's downstairs weeping.
What a pleasure she's been. And I'm sure, you know, um, he is a little worried. Um, we, we, we know how those wheels keep, keep turning in this town. So Amy, truly, it's been a pleasure to work with you. Um, we all wish you well and I'm sure you will do a great job for the City of Grafton. They will be very glad that they hired you.
Well, thank you very much. I really enjoy my time here. It's nice to go.
Anybody else wanna say anything about me?
Just ditto. I mean, we've talked to Amy individually, but a real loss for the town, but hard to argue that decision. It's a great opportunity and, uh, as I told her earlier, our Secretary of State, Bill Galvin, oughta watch out because she's coming up in the rearview mirror here, so we, we need, we need stronger office holder there. So Amy's got an opportunity, so good luck.
How long have you worked here, Amy?
Six years.
Oh, okay, good long time. So anyway, um, truly wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now the next one, I'm going to withdraw. Um, so Bill Sines, um, had submitted his resignation from the, um, ADA Committee, but he has since, after talking to Marguerite, decided that he actually would be willing to stay on it if we can get him some more help. So Marguerite's on the case. Um, she's going to go to the Dole Men's Club and see if she can recruit, um, some people to help with that committee. And if she can do that, Bill said, "I'll stay," correct? Okay, so, um, saying thank to him was a little bit premature, but I thought I'd just leave it on there to, to at least-
Well, we can thank him anyway, 'cause he's done great work.
Yes, Bill, we thank you for your service. It's been great and we're glad it's gonna continue.
We, we hope our thanks will increase.
Yes, it will. You know, he was on the, um, famous St. Mark's Park Working Group. Um, so anybody that could've sat on that committee and gotten through with it, um, on one piece like he did, deserves a lot of credit and he did. Okay, uh, let's see. Anybody else have a members' report? Nothing listed. No? Okay, Mark?
So just a couple of things. Uh, the first item, uh, is, um, I'll save the first one. I'll save the one, uh, the recreation piece for last. I, I think that's interesting. Um, the, um, Youth and Family Services is conducting a community needs assessment. Uh, the information is up on the website under their page. They're looking for Southborough residents, um, from all sectors of the community to participate. Um, so if you're a resident, please, you know, consider giving a little bit of time. They're looking to, you know, set up some focus groups, uh, to try to take a look at the services that are provided and, you know, um, how we can do a better job of, of providing services to our residents. So, um, you can go up on the website and take a look at the Youth and Family page and the information is up there for that.
When is the survey going to end? Do we know?
I don't, I don't know if there's a-
I didn't see it.
I didn't see an, no, I didn't see an end date. Um, so I think it's, it's, you know, but I would, I would say within the next couple of weeks. You know, people who are interested should participate.
So we really should try to encourage people to do this, so good job on that, but we've gotta get it out. Um, 'cause this really could provide a lot of good information. You remember that we were going to do a Senior Center survey that this kinda morphed into this one. Uh, we used ARPA money to fund this and this should cover everybody, so, including seniors. So we should get a lot of, if people will participate, we should get a lot of good information out of it that could be useful to us. Alright, is that it?
Uh, no, two quick things. One of the, well, well, one item on the rec, um, just to let the board know. We do have, um, the position of Executive Director has been advertised. Um, we do, um, have eleven resumes that have been submitted to date. Um, and we're gonna begin going through those and, uh, start putting together a process, um, which will incorporate the Operations Committee as well as the Board of Directors, um, for those interviews. Um, so hopefully, um, that works well. We've also requested from State 911 to expand, um, the allowances within the current grant allocation to provide the funding, to fund the position, so when we're ready to hire, we have the money available to hire. So, um, my understanding is we've gotten that verbal authorization. We're just waiting for the, you know, state doesn't follow quite as quickly with the written authorization, but, um, so we should be, we should be good with that.
How many applied?
Eleven so far. Eleven is what we have so far.
Okay.
Um, the last piece, um, with regard to, um, recreation, I just thought this was interesting. So, uh, registration, um, for spring and summer programming has opened and we had a note come from Travis Farley, our director, that on the first night of registration, they completed a hundred and fifteen transactions for roughly a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So, um-
Wow.
You know, um, when, um, Travis's predecessor was here, did a great job of, of really, you know, getting our programming, everything in shape and, and Travis has come in and continued that tradition. And obviously, people are very interested in the offerings that we have. So, um, kudos to, to Travis and, and Christina and their staff for, for pulling this off. Um, but it is a, uh, you know, it was a busy, busy, uh, day for Southborough Rec and he had added, "All while managing our final day of the snow ski and snowboard club." So, uh, there's an awful lot going on at Recreation and, um, you know, kudos to them for, uh, for keeping, uh, people interested in providing programs that people want.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
So you may have seen a post on my Southborough. Um, so Youth and Family Services and Rec have gotten together to try to make it easier for families who need some financial help to apply. So we've got one application that will apply to several programs that are doing it program by program by program, which is what people had to do before. So we're, we're gonna try to expand. I say "we," I'm working through the Friends of the Southborough Youth Commission with this. So it's out there. So, now, what so far we've done is, um, combine the applications for winter wishes, summer camperships, um, and rec rap programs into one application. We're gonna try to add some more to it, like transfer station stickers, but we, that was a little hard to do. So for the first year, we at least got those combined. So we're heading in the right direction to try to get the paperwork minimized for families that need to do this and don't have to do it every single time. So keep that in mind too. Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, consent agenda, we've got minutes, we've got donations and we've got Point and Clear as our out-large member, um, that's open for the CPC. Anybody wanna hold? A, B, or C?
A.
Okay, and B and C are okay?
Yep.
Okay, so motion to approve B and C?
I move that the board approve consent agenda items B and C.
Second.
Al in favor? Okay, Sam, minutes?
Minutes two four.
Okay.
Um, line eighty-seven and one fifty-two, Melissa Danza got a promotion. She's Conservation Agent, Danza, not commi- not commissioner.
Okay, so she's agent, not commissioner, right?
Not commissioner, yeah. And there, there are several references in the paragraph, starting with line eighty-seven, that, that needs to be changed. And then line one fifty-two, we're a reference as agent.
So so far, you're just trying to get commissioner changed to agent?
Correct, that's the correct title. That's right. Just the two paragraphs. That's it for me there.
And then I have a edit at line sixty-three, after zero percent, what in interest? Zero percent interest loan?
Yep.
Yep. I have a tiny one.
Are you done, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Marguerite.
Uh, on the fourth of February, line ninety-one, will forward it, needs a to, the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so you wanted to say forward to?
It says forward it to the Conservation. Right now it just says-
Forward it to.
Forward it, uh, yeah.
Alright, so the word to, okay?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it? Al? Okay, so that's that one. Sam?
Yeah, on the eighth, next.
Yep.
A question, line seventy-eight, the number three is in red.
Well, because I wasn't, I wrote these. I wasn't sure, but I am right. Three is the right number. Um, I checked today, so I put them red to make sure it's right. So, yeah, so we should now change that to?
It's correct, that's fine.
A black red, or a black three.
Okay.
Okay.
And, uh, nothing on two twelve for me. I'm set.
Alright, so that's it for you?
And on, on line thirty-five, where you say attached is Chief Pontini's proposed budget for FY twenty-six?
Yep.
Why don't you just say Chief Pontini's proposed budget results in a?
Fine.
Yeah.
Fine. Okay, so thirty-five, we just get rid of attached is and just say Chief Pontini's proposed budget, okay?
Are we still on February eighth?
We're on either the eighth or the twelfth.
Okay, on the eighth, uh, right at the end, line one fifty-one. I think it's Lara Davis, isn't it?
Well, I always, so it's-
L-A-R-A, I thought.
Okay.
That was just that, that's it.
That's my fault. Okay, one sixty-one, where? What, oh, there you are. Okay, one fifty-one. Okay, so Lara, L-A-R-A, correct? Okay?
That's it.
Alright, anybody else on the eighth, twelfth? Okay, alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the fourth, the eighth, and the twelfth as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, we're totally caught up with those. Okay, um, so we're gonna do the budget next and then we're gonna talk about Neary. We're gonna do the warrant articles. We're gonna, so I'm gonna flip this around a little bit. We're gonna do A, C, D, E, B, under other matters. Okay, budget. You wanna come on up, Brian? You wanna sit there? Okay, Brian. We're gonna, Chief, we're gonna talk about the overall budget first and then we'll talk to you. Okay, alright, okay. So you have in front of you two different, um, rev cap spreadsheets. One reflects the informal decisions we made on the eighth and also reflects some things that have transpired since then and in, in some cases gone the right way. So that's basically the result of February eighth. Okay?
So disregard the one that was in our packet.
Yes, 'cause we were trying not to confuse you. So, but I've given you a second one that I have, um, unilaterally, um, had Brian make some changes to, so I'm making that clear. So we've gotta talk about those, um, that got it down a little bit more. Okay, so Brian, um, Vanessa, can you pop it up on the screen?
The second one?
No, the first one. The one that has a projected eight point three two percent increase to residential taxpayers on page one. Okay, so this reflects February eighth, the decisions we made at the end of the meeting and then also some things that have happened since then that have updated the numbers. For example, Bill kind of came in with, um, a couple of numbers that were less than what he had there, so that helped. Brian and Carla determined we could use a larger amount for local revenue, so that's there. So no changes have been made to our decisions. These reflect the decisions that day. Um, but some numbers have been updated to reflect actual better numbers. Okay? Now, before we get into this in detail, can you scroll all the way down, Vanessa? Okay, so this is really important to, to make clear. If you look at line fifty, you're gonna see that the actual increase in expenditures, based on what we've got right here, is five point five percent year over year. Now, going back to the topic again, Vanessa, you're gonna have to do this a couple of times. The reason that the increase to houses is eight point three two is because they have, Brian has, along with possibility, projected another value shift between the residential property class and the commercial, industrial, and personal property class. Right now, they are assuming that the rate of increase in value is gonna be two and a half percent different. So if houses go up five percent, they think CAP is gonna go up two and a half percent. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a huge, look at the swing. So you go from five and a half to eight point three two just because of that. If we, if the values have gone up, um, exactly the same on one one twenty-five, the tax increase would be five and a half percent. So far so good, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um, so that's where we- All right, so, that's where we are going into tonight. The purpose of tonight is to determine where else we want to try to take this proposed budget to, to get ready for town meeting. Advisory hasn't met on this. Is Andrew Faff in the audience? Vanessa, can you see? So, they haven't had a chance to look at this, okay?
Yeah.
Not yet, but I just wanna make sure he's there, 'cause he's probably gonna have, have a comment or two. Okay, so, we can go around the table to see where any other cuts people wanna make are. I'm gonna start with things that I did. The things that I did got us down to 7.94% year over year to residents and a 5.2% overall budget increase to, to the town. Okay, so, let's start with capital. So, if you flip to, back page back. So, I'm gonna start with schools, and I have discussed this with both Chelsea Melonowski and Greg Martin, oh, this afternoon. Greg was okay with the following. So, if you go to the bottom, you're gonna see we've got $45,000 for the Fink classroom, so, I left that in. We've got $25,000 for Woodward Tech. You've got $60,000 for Tri-Deer Tech. We already took out the AC window, the ACs for, the window units on Saturday. You've got $55,000 for curtains at the Tri-Deer Auditorium. So, Greg would like to leave in the 55, but take out the 60 for Tri-Deer Tech. I said, "If you had to take out one, which one do you take out?" He said, "Take out the Tri-Deer Tech." So, that would be 60 that we could take out. And remember, as a rule of thumb, every half a million dollars we take out, we'll lower that by 1% roughly. Okay? So, I'm just gonna say, does anyone have an issue with that? Does anyone wanna keep it in? Is anyone married to this one? Does any, does everybody agree with taking that one out?
That sounds fine to me, but I'm really wondering, $55,000 for curtains, is it urgent to do it?
They think, both Chelsea and Greg seem to think it is a safety issue that, I mean, I guess they imply that it, they may fall down or something on people, I don't know. Years ago, Bo spent a lot of money on that auditorium and donated a whole lot of stuff, so, I'm hoping that this can come out eventually, they can find someone to donate this. But for now, they said, if, you know, if you gotta make a choice, take out the infrastructure and leave that one there, 'cause they do seem to think that it's a problem not addressing the curtains.
Okay, thanks.
Al?
Yeah, this is the school committee's call, I think.
Okay, and they, so, Greg, 4 o'clock this afternoon, said that was okay. Okay? Now, let me say this, too, they're going back to the drawing board, they're gonna try to get some more money out of both school budgets. There, there's gonna be more meetings, he understands the urgency. I'm gonna show you a spreadsheet in a second that shows you truly what our three drivers of this increase are. It's basically police and fire budget, it is capital, because last year, we had so much paid for with ARPA money, and it's the cost of benefits. The health insurance right now is projected to go up 24% year over year because of our experience this past year, et cetera. So, they're trying to work on that, but they're, they're not sure how they're gonna solve that one. And that affects us, Northborough, and Elgonquin. Okay? All right, so, everybody okay with that one? Okay? All right. Um, next one is the flashing lights at various intersections. Bill had proposed those to be two at Woodward, one at Fink, one across from Marles, Faith School, and St. Mark's. We already took out Faith School and St. Mark's and, and said, "We'll tell them about it, they wanna pay for it, they, we can, we'd be happy to help them get it done." But we already took those out. So, we're left with two at Woodward, one at Fink, and one at Marles. Marles is $10,000, Woodward is a little bit more expensive, and Fink is another $10,000. I talked to Chelsea Melonowski, and she said, "Take the Fink one out, because we're not sure what's gonna happen to Fink, and kids there don't walk to school." Kids do walk to Woodward, but they don't walk to Fink, they're not gonna walk to Fink by themselves. So, she was okay taking that one out, if they can't, I said, "Can you find it in your budget?" She goes, "I don't know," but she knows that we're gonna take it off this, and she was okay with that. She would like to see the Woodward ones kept, because she said, "There, it is a danger," and kids do walk to school by themselves, so, she'd like to see the Woodward ones kept, and Fink can come out. So, if we did that, we'd have three. We would have?
This is the Woodward crossing on Main Street?
There's two of them, there's two of them.
Yeah, right.
So, I assume one is Main Street, I don't see how it couldn't be, right?
Yeah.
And maybe the other one is across Cordville Road?
85, yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't, well, I guess kids coming from, you know, Faith School area could walk across the street, so, it's gotta be that one, too, 'cause there's two. So, the proposal would be to leave the three, and this is just the work to get the crosswalk ready. The lights are being donated to us from the state, we're not paying for it. That's why Bill put this on there, because we're getting the lights from the state. Okay? So, we take out, and I believe that one's $10,000 for Fink, Brian, so, we take out $10,000, so, that would go down to 65 for the three remaining. And VHB has actually estimated the cost now, so, Bill's comfortable with that cost. So, it has come down quite a bit from that Saturday. We left Saturday with that, $120,000.
So, it's just from here, it's 10, not 65?
Well, that's, okay, but you're looking at the wrong one, that's mine, okay? And I talked to Chelsea after that, so, be careful. Look at the other one, you'll see.
Okay.
That won't be the case. See that? Okay, everybody okay with taking the Fink one out? Okay?
And Bill, Bill is okay with that, I assume?
Yes.
He's in the audience.
He is okay with this. I mean, the reason he proposed this is because the state was giving us the flashing lights, right? Or this wouldn't have been here.
Yep.
Okay, so, got that, Brian?
Yep.
Okay? All right. Flag School. So, we reduced that at the meeting from 175 to 100. John Parent quickly said, "I can't do that for 100, and I, it's impossible." He said, "I'm gonna spend $100,000 on just the insulation." So, he said, "I could do it for 150, so, you can take 25 out." And he's gonna try to get a grant for this, but he won't know he's got the grant until he's got the grant. So, the proposal there is to put the 100 back up to 150.
The insulation's gonna cost $100,000?
That's what he says, Al, and he usually knows what he's talking about.
I, I, I believe him, because at that point?
Yeah, that's exactly what he said.
It would be cheaper to pay for the oil.
Is he?
I'm serious.
Is he in the audience by any chance? I didn't ask him to be here.
I'll follow up with him.
No, he's not.
All right, so, can we tentatively put it back to 150, 'cause he says, and, you know, he almost always comes in under budget and knows, you know, he tries to actually pinch every penny he can.
The, the economics of it are, you know, insulation is a substitute for heating fuel, and at this point?
Okay, so, you'll talk to him, but for now, we'll put it back at 150, based on his request?
Yeah.
Okay?
It's just a question of looking at what the bill is and making a financial decision.
Okay. Um, the police cruisers, we reduce those from two to one. There are conversations ongoing right now with the private schools. I am hoping the next time we talk about this, that that will, we can remove that, because the private schools are gonna step up and buy the cruisers. And they've done that in the past, that's what they're gonna be asked for. So, hopefully, that one will be removed. Still get them, but not on our nickel. Okay? All right, so, that's all I've got, Brian, as far as things that I thought we might do to capital. Did I miss anything?
Uh, I think we got everything.
Okay, so, now, that's me. Now, we got four of the people here. Anybody else have any suggestions on what to?
I have one very small one.
Go ahead.
Which is, we had briefly discussed zeroing out the select board salary line.
We'll stay on capital first, we'll get to it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, anything else on capital?
Nope, it's been fairly thoroughly worked through, so, I can't believe there's a lot there that's?
We worked that pretty good on that Saturday, I'm sorry. And Bill was, Bill was fine with everything we did, and he has lowered some of the cost of things since then, so, it's, it's gone the right way. Okay, so, there's capital, as far as seeing other things we can do tonight.
Bill's hand is up.
He's got his hand up?
Yep.
Okay, so, bring him over.
Am I on?
Yep.
You are.
Good evening, your motorcycle's on.
I don't know why that is, but anyways, I just wanted to check if you're talking about the water items yet, because I have a couple of things that were omitted, it looks like, in the list.
Did you say water?
Yes.
We didn't intend to talk about water tonight.
Okay.
We're trying to, this is really the, the real estate taxes bill versus the water?
Yeah, this is a non-tax item, so, yeah.
So, is what you need to do gonna change our water rate vote?
It, it is not.
Okay.
It is not.
Okay. So, did you hear everything we said about capital in the last few minutes?
Yes, I have no issue with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, thank you, you can hang in if you want to, but I don't think anything else will affect you tonight that we're gonna talk about. Okay, so, now, Al, we're gonna talk about the ARPA budgets. Okay, the first thing that I had Brian do is change the number of new policemen from four to three by having the first one start October 1st, so, eliminate July 1st, to October 1st, January 1st, April 1st. So, Chief, hold on, we'll get you up here, but let's just, we're just gonna talk about this. That's, that's the big thing that I asked Brian to look at, and that's the thing that changed this by the most, as far as that goes. So, we're gonna talk to Chief about it, so, that's one thing. Al wants to reduce the select board stipend from 4,000 to zero?
Yeah, I think this is a matter of leading by example, you know, I mean, it's, it's hardly worth the discussion, but, you know, the, the sum in question is almost insulting. In fact, it, you know, it's working for a dollar and a quarter an hour, which seems to me to?
Overpaid, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, I admit, yes, I realize that many people wanna refund.
My understanding that Sam and Al have waived it anyway for the current year, right? And then, you said, "Okay"?
No, I turned it back.
You already turned yours back, too? So, I'll, I'll give you the principle, I'm fine doing that, but I know how much money I spend on town stuff, I write checks for food, whatever, so, I know I'm way, I know I'm out of pocket a lot of money, and this just offsets it by a little bit. So, I'm okay with this, it doesn't mean anything, I hear the principle, but, you know, it, it definitely costs money, too, to, to, to sit here, for sure.
I'm well aware.
Okay, all right, so, I'm happy to make that zero. Is everybody's okay with that?
Andrew?
Yeah, I can't really make a compelling case why it was set at that amount, why we do it, it's just something we just do, and I?
It was probably to get people gas money to get here, I guess, or something, I don't know what, what the order was.
This has been around for as long as I can remember, and this was probably put in when the sum was at least somewhat meaningful and the job was perhaps less demanding.
I'm pretty sure no one runs for this job for the $800.
Wait, wait a minute, I meant for the money, hold on.
Okay, all right, so, Brian, you got 4,000 bucks, and?
Okay.
8,000, right?
Yep. Don't get used to it.
I think you ought to encourage the other boards to do this likewise.
So, I don't know who else it would be, school committee gets 500 bucks.
I think the moderator gets $120.
Okay.
But I don't know what that's?
I'm not going there, he's, he's independently elected, so, so, school committee, so, if they wanna throw it in, they, they can do it. Okay, now, on a more serious note, is there any other budget? Oh, I've also proposed two different things. So, I propose to put the store commission money back in that they want to work on the old burial ground. We really wanted that old burial ground to be worked on, I think it's timely to do because of 27, so, I would vote to put that back into the 4,000 and change that they had requested from the 1,000.
Me, too, particularly with the tricentennial coming up, I think that's important.
Yep, I think they'll get a lot done with that 4,000, I hope, as far as that goes. So, Al?
I, that's what we have the CPAC for, the preservation accounts for, you know, that is clearly an historic activity, it's, it's a dedicated bucket. Yeah, I think they ought to be making applications to the CPA, as long as we have the CPA.
So, Marguerite?
I think that the, the old burial ground probably do well with what the historical has asked for, in addition to anything they can get from the CPC.
I just hate to have them have to do all the paperwork for 4,000 bucks with the CPA, and still not even know they're gonna get it.
Yeah.
And the historic bucket is the one that's truly been drained, you know, it's, it's overdrawn as far as CPA money. So, for that reason, too, I'm not sure that it would get approved, and I'd hate to see them go to all the trouble of submitting an application for 4,000 bucks, go to all the meetings, and then, get turned down. Andrew?
What, what is the money for, again?
They, well, Marguerite, do you know better than I do? It's, it's, oh, Bill?
Part of it is the stones are deteriorating, they get mowed over once they've fallen over, and that breaks them, and they need repair, which isn't being done. It's just general disintegration. It needs help.
Guess why is that, then, a historical commission thing instead of a DPW item where it's?
So, this is maybe why we need a cemetery commission. Just saying.
Or maybe not.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't closed a loop on that either.
Yeah.
So, it's 4,000 bucks.
Okay.
We've talked about money out of some of the trust funds for this as well, limited what you, what you could do.
Another potential source.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, as someone that worked with Bill, that do all the trouble of following the paperwork for this town common railing, and I thought that if that was successful, the next thing we would do would be something along those lines, so, it's not that difficult to fill out, it was like a three or four-page application, so?
So, why don't we have Kevin Miller come in on the 18th, or the 4th, and just clarify what he wants, and then, we can decide whether there's a better bucket for them to, to go to than just the general fund. How about that? So, we'll leave it at 1,000 for now. Okay, the second one is the increased hours for the senior center. I didn't understand this one at first, but I do now. So, remember, at a meeting in the last six months, we approved the hiring of a person who was going to be a volunteer coordinator that was being funded by a grant from the Cummings Foundation, I believe it is?
Yes, yes.
Cummings Foundation. What I didn't understand, that, that, you know, this is, you know, the slippery slope, you get the grant, and then, what do you do after the grant is up? So, that's what's gonna happen here if we don't approve the money they're asking for. So, Heidi Sabelli was hired the first of the year, she's got funding for all of calendar year at 25, but nothing after that. I went down, talked to Pam, and she believes that they've got a reasonable chance of getting this grant renewed, but they won't be able to do that till September, so, long after town meeting. So that's why they've asked for this to be put in here as a Plan B in case Plan A doesn't come through. So, we could do a couple of things here. We could leave it out and ask advisory if they'd be willing to entertain a reserve fund transfer if they don't get the grant, that's one way to approach this. But the senior center seems to really wants this position and want to have some plan to make sure that they can at least take it through 630-26.
Is this the intergenerational program?
Yes.
Which I think is a particularly good program.
So, thoughts?
So the amount we're talking about is...
12,000?
12,000?
Yep.
That is a reserve fund comfort zone figure to me.
Yeah, I just don't know if they'll consider it a, a reserve fund, it's supposed to be for something not anticipated. This probably doesn't quite fit that bill, and that's why I was seeing Andrew Faff out in the audience to see if he wants to weigh in on this now. But that, if, if Andrew agrees that yes, they'd at least entertain this as a reserve fund transfer, okay?
If this is, if we're going to know the status of the grant in September, and we were to have a October special, that would be a second way of dealing with this, which is to zero it now, and with the understanding that if the grant doesn't come through, then we would put it on for a fall town meeting.
And the only issue there is, this is a small amount of money again, too, it's not going to change the needle, is that we're trying to keep money stuff off the fall, because we're trying to say in April, town meeting, this is what we think your taxes are going to be if you approve this budget. And if you start adding things to it in the fall, you kind of have not explained things correctly in April. Again, this is not moving the needle at all, and the, my other reason for doing this, the seniors, as we know, get very little money compared to, for example, what school children get, right? It's not even close. And therefore, when they ask for things as small as this, I tend to want to be on their side and just do it.
But, but having the discussion now about what we're thinking of doing makes it hard to fit into the unanticipated box
Right.
for, for advisory to consider.
Andrew has joined us.
Is he over?
Yeah, he's joined us, yeah.
This, this would not, in my opinion, qualify for a reserve fund if you, as somebody who was the guardian of those funds for a few years.
Andrew?
Hey, everybody.
Hey.
Andrew Faff, 50, okay? I would say if we were going to handle this similar to we did, I think, for the printer years ago, for the, it was for the Board of Health, where we increased the reserve fund by that amount and pre-year marked it, I, I think we could probably be convinced to do that. I agree, it's not truly an emergency to hit our, you know, limited funds that we have today. I, I do think, you know, going to a fall town meeting makes sense too. I think, you know, a lot of towns in their reserve fund policy that I've been working on, you know, if there's an opportunity to go to town meeting and have them vote on it, that, you know, that should happen as well. So, I think we go either way, but I think just putting it in just in case in the budget now, I would not recommend that.
So Vanessa, can you do this so that we can have a firm answer on the 4th? Can you call Pam and just make sure I've got the date right as far as when she would know, when they would know that they would get the grant renewed or not? And try to get the, you know, exact date if you can, so we make sure that it would work with a fall town meeting, okay?
But if we bump the reserve fund a little bit, as Andrew suggested, that doesn't help us.
Budget-wise, no, so that, that, that one doesn't do too much for me.
Yeah, me either.
I'm just thinking there was a precedent, whether it was good or bad, with the Board of Health staffing about three, four years ago. We did something similar to what we're talking about now.
Yep, 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 yep. Okay, so Al's recommendation is to do nothing for now, leave it out, and if they don't get the grant, put it on the warrant for the fall town meeting that we're pretty sure we're going to have, and deal with it that way. So that's one way to go here. I personally don't like bumping up the reserve fund, because we haven't accomplished anything, but doing that budget-wise, so might as well leave it, add it into their budget. So where, where does everybody else stand as far as either adding it? To me, the two choices are put it in, right, now, or do what Al suggested. I would have preferred just to have had it be a reserve fund transfer without bumping up the reserve fund, but that's not what Andrew's saying. So since that may be off the table, I think I'm kind of in the Al camp to make sure we got a plan as long as the timing works, which Vanessa will find out between now and next meeting, and if it does, do it at fall town meeting. It's 12,000 bucks, it's not much money.
My thought is that the schools do get a lot, and I think it's, the seniors don't, and it's, I think it's important for the seniors to feel that they're supported in the budget by us.
Okay, so straw vote, I would vote to put it in. You would vote to put it in, okay? Anybody else would vote to actually put it in, the actual budget?
I'd move to fall.
Okay, so you have fall, you're fall, right?
Yes, fall.
All right, so you're the tiebreaker. Okay, so, let's see what Vanessa says at the next meeting. As long as it works, we'll put it on the fall warrant, okay? So it's not going to be put back in.
Kevin Miller has joined us with his hand up.
All right, so we'll, Kevin, we know you got your hand up, we'll get to you in just a second, if that's okay. Okay, so, any other budgets anybody wants to scrub further? We're going to talk to Chief Newell and Chief Poutine in a second. The schools are going to go back and try very hard to find some significant money that they can take out of one or the other budget. So they haven't done their final vote, so they understand that we need to try to get this down further. Okay? Okay, anybody else have a, have a...
Could we ask Kevin for his input about the graveyard? Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so, is he, have you brought Kevin Miller over yet? So we'll go back to the store commission budget.
Hey, Kevin.
Hi there, Select Board. Thanks for taking my comment. I just thought I might be, save you a little time. With regard to our budget, in fiscal '17, '18, and '19, the commission's budget was $3,500. In '20, in '21, it was $2,500, in '22, it was $3,362. And then, owing to COVID and the loss of our sign maker, among other things, this was before I was chair, in fiscal '23, the budget was reduced to $1,000, and we hold there, held there because of COVID-related issues. So in asking for 4250, what I'm really trying to do is adjust it for inflation, and I'm actually below an inflation-adjusted rate, but to get us back within calling distance of what we had between 2017 and 2022, noting that we have a couple of very specific notions about what that budget would be for, among other things, I need to erect a previously paid-for, signed-for-the-bridge-abutments-on, historic bridge-abutments-on Parkerville Road. We also have a project to mark, to note marked and unmarked Revolutionary War veterans' graves in the old burial ground, which is going to cost several thousand dollars. And if we get the money in the budget, we can simply do it. So that was, the thinking was, again, to get us back inflation-adjusted within calling distance. Again, in fiscal '22, we had $3,300. So that, that was the point. I know it looks like a kind of shocking increase from fiscal '25's $1,000 to be asking for 4250, but again, I'm just trying to get it back to what we were for a half a dozen years from 2016 to 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody have a change of heart after hearing that? I do, I'd put it back in. I'd give him the 4250. Marguerite, so yes? Andrew?
I think Al made a good point about the CPA.
Okay, so you're no. Keep 1,000. Sam?
I'd put it back in, and I'd continue to pursue CPA as well.
Al?
It's not a hill I'm going to die on.
All right, so you got three votes to put it back in, and a wavering. So it's either 3.2 or 3.5, 1.5, I'm not sure. Anyway, so put it, put it back in, okay?
Kathy, may I ask a question?
Who said that?
Andrew.
Somebody said something.
Oh, Andrew.
Andrew.
Oh, Andrew Faff, go ahead, Andrew.
Kevin, are you comfortable that you will be able to spend it in that fiscal year? Or would we be better off making this a capital item so that you have multi, multiple years to do with it?
Well, you mean to be a warrant article instead of part of the budget.
That, that's a fair question. With regard to the, the OBG marker, which is the really important one and would be the most expensive, we're very close on the research. We've had Sally Waters working on this for over a year, and I, I, I would hope we would spend it in this fiscal year, but it's a fair question, and I, you know, I don't want to say to a certainty, but I think we would do our very best. We have an, we have an eye toward, this has to be accomplished before the tricentennial. That's the view of the historical commission, and so why I'm pressing for it in this budget request.
Okay, so if you had it as a warrant article, it doesn't close out. If you put it in the budget, it closes out at 630-26, so that's what the two forces are.
This captures, my concern about it is that it's more of a one-time item rather than a recurring operating item. I think of, like, the, for, for boards and committees like that, the reason why we have these kind of smaller budgets is for, like, a classic example would be for minute takers, right?
Well, open space has 5,000, cultural arts for the person that's 4,000.
There's a question about that too, but...
So I am...
I don't really know what that money is used for, or... I'm not going to go off on a whole other tangent on that, though, but...
Well, these are small amounts of money. So I would say leave it in the budget, 4250. I wouldn't put it as a separate warrant article, it's not worth it to have to talk about $4,000 at town meeting. So I'd leave it as part of the budget, knowing that, and he knows they've got to spend it.
Also pursue CPA and see if there's possibility there.
Yeah, but they're not going to get that until next year.
Right.
Right? So, okay. All right, Kevin, you, you've got it back in the budget for the moment.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And to speak clear, Andrew's here tonight, but not the rest of advisory, so they've got to weigh in on this too, because remember, we decide what goes in the warrant, advisory recommends the budget to the town. We try to, we try to end up with the same budget, but they certainly haven't weighed in on this either. So you've still got at least that group to get through too.
Appreciate that and understood. We're going to get this project done one way or another, so thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so now let's turn to, Vanessa, can you pop up the spreadsheet that I sent you three times and do the third one? Another spreadsheet. It's a simple one.
Here's another one.
No, no. So the one I sent you is by email. It's, it's, this is still the budget spreadsheet. Okay, here it is. Okay, so I did this real quick this afternoon, just to show everyone where the budget increases are really coming from, for the most part. And it's three places. It's the benefits budget, which Brian's going to talk about, it's capital. And it's capital because we have been living on ARPA money for the last couple of years and using ARPA money for a lot of capital. So it was going to bounce up this year, regardless of what we did. We've got it down a lot, but it's still bounced up quite a bit. So that's the capital plus the debt service compared to the same numbers last year. And then the significant increases in both the police and fire department operating budgets, including what we believe will be the impact of the new collective bargaining agreements. So those are your three bigger, big numbers. It's, that's over, it's almost two-thirds of the increase. So with that, so, both, why don't you both come up, Chief Newell and Chief Poutine, let's talk about your budgets to see if there's anything else we can do to get to what you need and still save some money here. All right, so let's start with fire first. I think that was a little bit less complicated. So you remember what we agreed to do on the 8th was to add the deputy as of January 1st, and then to, we agreed to the overtime that Chief Poutine had put together, that he needs to have a constant five-person shift. Right now, he doesn't have enough overtime to keep five people there, he has to have four a lot of times. So he put together a number, I believe it was 515,000, to do that. We agreed with that except for 50,000 and decided that if he really needed more overtime, he could go to advisory for that. Advisory were sitting right there, so they heard that piece of it. After the meeting, Mark and I talked to him, he said, "Well, if I known you were going to push the deputy back to January 1st, I would have told you to reduce my overtime." So what I said is that, that's fine, we can do that as long as the bottom line stays the same. So he would like to have the deputy start July 1st, correct?
Yep.
And then reduce whatever that costs, which is about 75,000 bucks, to his overtime. So take off 50 and 75 to get to a reduced overtime, so still same bottom line. Same balance. Nothing's really changed from what we agreed to that day, so I just want to make sure you know that. Want to make sure he continued to say he wants his deputy July 1st. There's a lot going on in his world these days, the rec, et cetera, so he needs the deputies to start. So he wants that July 1st, and he'll give up some overtime to get that.
Correct.
Okay, now, you can add, subtract, correct anything I just said?
No, that was, that's accurate. I think it's important to get the deputy on board as soon as possible. It is a new position, we're going to have to kind of, you know, pave the way for, you know, how that position's going to operate. You know, we have an idea, we have it on paper, but the reality is, you know, going to be something different. And the deputy's going to give me a little bit more bandwidth, especially as the rec is really picking up weekly meetings, you know, just to be able to broaden my reach.
Yes, again, bottom line hasn't changed, this has been rearranged a little bit. We've got the deputy's car on the capital plan, so that's there. So, all Chief is doing tonight is saying I need to rearrange between the deputy position and the overtime bucket. Okay, but the net is the, the same, right, Brian? Okay, so anybody have an issue with that? So I'm sorry you came out for this. I told Brian you didn't really have to come. I thought it was going to be okay, but I'm glad you're here. Okay, so anything else you want to add, Chief, while you're here?
No, no, like I said, my first process doing this, and it's been enlightening so far, so, yeah. So, and I always welcome any questions, so. I understand.
All right, so thank you for that one. So I think we're done with that one. Okay, and Andrew, any issue with that, you think, from the advisory committee?
It's too early to tell, but if it's a net, it shouldn't matter.
All right, Chief Newell, so, in an effort, again, to try to get something out of this number and get the first number down to seven, I asked Brian to see what it looked like if we took one of the new policemen out of the budget for fiscal year '26 and started them 10-1, 1-1, on April 1st, instead of July 1st also. So that did get it down to seven as a first number, as far as a year-over-year increase to the average house.
And I think the optics are useful on that, even though it's high sevens, right?
I don't know what you guys have heard, but I've, we've gotten a lot of pushback on adding so many policemen in one year with everything else that's going on, and so I had, I hope that this will maybe mitigate that a little bit. Schools have eliminated three people, which they, they will want us to not forget. Algonquin is down one or two, I think maybe one and a half, so...
Are the three for schools, is that the attrition or, I don't remember?
I think one is a position and maybe the other two are attrition, so I don't remember for sure, so that's my guess. It's some combination of that. Okay, we're going to give you a chance to talk, so I'm just trying to see what everybody else thinks at this point. So, that's one proposal. You could do, you could propose something else, you could say, leave it alone. So I don't know what your thinking is as far as, again, trying to get this budget down a little bit. And the police and fire alone are $1 million out of the $5 million.
I think it's worth the effort to try to squeeze it a little bit here, but I'd be interested to see what the chief has to say.
Okay, so why don't we hear from Chief Newell first?
So, yeah, I, I definitely would like to keep what I had in place. I had the, you know, with the meeting with the advisory and with you all. This is about public safety, and I have to stress how, you know, we, we did the staffing study, and the staffing studies showed that we need, we needed nine immediate hires, like, immediate. And I feel like we've just been kicking the can down the road, and I, I feel like this is something that we need, we need, I was asking for two cruises this year, and we definitely need two, that's without a doubt. We have cruises that are over 100,000, we have young officers that are out there patrolling... We have young officers that are out there patrolling. My concern is if you take one of those cruises away, we're going to be more issues with our cruises. We have one that's a hybrid that's constantly in the shop and I'm just being honest. My concern is this is the office space for the officers that are out there patrolling. So you take that away and it's a, it's, that's a big deal for this department. Again, we had asked for these, I initially asked for six and we were talking about four for this year. For perfect example, last week, we had two officers on duty, one was, and then a trainee. So there was three of us, there were the three on patrol. We had a tractor trailer smash into a River Street Bridge with the tractor itself detached. We had a broken down TT at the exact same time in front of Fitzgerald Store and then a 911 call come in from 162 Quarterville. We're spread thin. We need bodies, we need, for the citizens and the residents of this town, we, we need to have more officers there. It's not something that I, I'm asking lightly. This is, I know we're in a tough constraint, but I, I've been here for 23 years, like I explained at the meeting, and I've seen this progression of, of population growing, you know. I reached out to Mastod, there's 38,000 cars that go through Southborough every single day, which bring all sorts of crime with them. These officers are out there and I want them to have the backup that they need to stay safe, but I also want the residents to know that, you know, we're going to have two officers responding to their calls for service and that involves increasing numbers, so.
Chief, on the eighth, you had four open positions currently. Have you, what's the progress? It's been about three weeks, so what progress have you made to fill those four?
So we have a lot of applications in, but a lot of them are for officers that are not trained. The current contract is not out there with the new language with the CBA, so they're not aware of the pay increase or anything. I feel like we will get more transfers in from other departments once we recognize that we're paying what a lot, you know, a lot of the other towns and areas, surrounding towns are paying. That's going to be an attractive part of it. We have one that just accepted a conditional offer today, literally just got the text
So one of the four today?
Yep. And then, so the others are, we would have to send to the academy. So we, we're doing interviews next week for, for those officers.
The one today is trained, though?
He is trained, yep.
Okay.
He was a Worcester officer. He went to the DEA. DEA was going to train, send him over to New York, but he has, he has a family obligation, so he decided not to go and join a local department, so. We can fill these positions. Yes, it may take time because of the, the current climate of this profession, but we need to have the bodies to be out there. And I know it's not a popular opinion in this fiscal year, but it's, if, if I'm the, you know, department head for this department, I have to argue for, for that position.
When will you be able to publicly discuss the new agreement? At what point? Does it have to wait for town meeting, vote?
So I've, I've seen other departments advertise with an MOA in place. So once the MOA is signed, which should be tonight, or?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I just, I'll jump in, chief.
Yeah.
So the board is, 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 the, the police union has ratified, the board has not. Once the board has ratified and we have a fully ratified agreement that, you know, town meeting will have to fund the first year of, in April, at that point, I think, you know, the, the, the terms can be, can be released, at least the MOA would be.
At, at which point? When we sign or when they vote to?
After the board has ratified.
Okay, so.
We want it ratified tonight, tomorrow?
So if you were to ratify tonight, I think that then it becomes a document that the chief can make useful.
Yeah.
And at that point, we can put that out there and get, you know, we've been poached for this past year and a half. So hopefully we can start, you know, doing the poaching, which sounds awful. I can't believe we've even come to that point in this career, but we have.
If, if we do that, realistically, would you be able to add the bodies for July 1st?
I believe so, yeah. If we talked about what was decided at the, the joint meeting and, you know, if we had to stagger it, the four for this fiscal year and then the two hopefully the following year, I think we could do that, definitely.
But there's not a likelihood that it would naturally stagger for FY '26, given the recruiting timeline and so forth?
It, well, we would be proactive in, in trying to fill the positions. And, you know, like I said, with an MOA in place, I think that we would have the, the best fishing lure.
So probably would be a problem if we assume that it's going to be staggered and you're more effective than you think in terms of being able to get it filled. So you don't want to wind up in that position.
Right.
He doesn't have to stick with that, though. He's got a pot of money that he could, you know, hire two people right on July 1st. So he doesn't have to stagger it if he doesn't want to. It means he wouldn't get the third one to the next year, but he can, he can, if he's got some great candidates come through, he's got the ability to, to front load that hiring with the money he's got. So he doesn't have to stick with the, you know, every three months one. And that Saturday, I was skeptical and I'm still slightly skeptical, maybe not as much as then, that you really will be able to get all the current slots filled by July 1st. So just humor me for a second. Let's say you didn't, right? And then you've got a budget that says July 1st, October 1st, January 1st, and April 1st, but you can't fill it. And so that just means the extra money gets approved, real estate taxes get paid, get, get raised, and you don't, you know, you, you turn it back. And so we've raised taxes for not a good reason. So we're just, I'm trying to be realistic here and you know more than I do. I'm not trying to, to even come close to saying that. But on the other hand, I just got back from my little hometown of Kentucky a couple hours ago and I actually did some due diligence. I went into the police department there and sat down, talked to the chief there and same-sized town, that's why I wanted to do this, 10,000 people. And I said, "How many policemen do you have?" And he said, "I've got 29." And I said, "What do you do about schools? We've got one policeman all day long at every single school, five schools. So we've got five different people all day long. They don't do anything else but go to school. So they've got the five school resource officers. And on top of that, unlike here, counties are very important, so they've got a sheriff's department that backs up the, the city. So is Southborough comparable to Franklin, Kentucky? Probably not, as far as what goes on there, but I don't think it's too crazy to say that they've got 29 plus a sheriff's department and we've got 21. So it does sound like, you know, it's based on that, I'm convinced you need more people. But I just, we, we've got to get this budget passed and adding this many people one year, we just have never done, as long as I can remember. We've done one, one, one. So it's already a big lift to ask for three and definitely four, certainly five and six. So I, I'm still going to support, even if I'm, you know, one vote, doing the, you know, doing three and staggering them starting October 1st, just because I, we've just got to do something to get this money down.
So you're talking about what's different than what we had talked about?
Yes. So we talked about four on Saturday. And we said July 1st, October 1st, January 1st, and April 1st. The money that, whatever that money is, that's the money he's got, right?
So this is instead of four, it's three?
Yeah, and I'd get rid of July 1st because I think he's still got a tough lift to get the positions he's got open right now filled by July 1st. He disagrees.
And this is the difference between the 8.32 and the 7.94? See that? You know, you've, you consider all things together, you know. What we have to do is first get the budget passed by town meeting. And there, there is a significant difference just in terms of, I hate this word, but you said it.
Optics?
Yeah, impressions or how, how people react to it, between something that's over eight and something that's slightly under eight, you know?
Is there something else that we could find to get it under eight? I'm hard pressed to think of.
And maybe the schools will come up with something that, because there is no doubt Greg Martino sincerely means to go back and look at things. So they may come up with something big and if so, then maybe we wouldn't have to do this. But as Mr. Purple just pointed out, it's not just three positions. The lieutenant is coming on full-time too. So we only funded half of that, so we really added another half of that too. So that boosted up. You've got a new CBA. You've got a new police chief contract. So it just, there's a lot on top of.
You're talking about, what, $150,000, something like that here difference, so.
With benefits, yeah.
I'm just wondering, if the budget goes in high, letting the people at town meeting decide whether they want to reduce the police budget or not, I think most residents would want to support the police and, and do the hires. Just my thought.
I don't know what the split is. I think you're going to have people in both camps. I don't know what the split is. I think it'll be a well-attended town meeting, so I don't know where they come out when they see real estate taxes being as high as they are, you know?
Maybe I'm just wussing, but I think it's, it's, if people are willing to pay for the hires, then they can vote to pay for the hires.
I think it's important too to, you know, point out that the reasons why, you know, these positions were needed. You know, we have a detective division that's faltering. We have a lot of things going on in town that we can't adequately dedicate the personnel to follow up on. So perception-wise, you're going to see this department become more reactive and proactive and that concerns me as the, as a department head. You know, again, we talk about optics. I don't ever want people to think that they're not safe in this town. And it's not a scare tactic when I say that. I'm just saying, we have so many services and good people that we could devote to doing these specialty positions, but we're not able to do it because we're going out there and handling calls all day long.
I, I think there's a circular process here too, in the sense that if you've got the resources internally, that drives motivation and enthusiasm and whatever for people. It makes it easier to hire people and retain people.
Right.
As opposed to being strapped and people thinking that they're overextended and
Right.
not really getting the kind of support they need. So to me, that's a concern. I guess, net-net, I'm, I'm supportive of the original plan and crossing my fingers that the schools may come through with something that gets us down to the seven-digit.
Well, we could leave it the way it is for now, for tonight. The schools are, we're going to hear from them pretty fast. And they're going to open the bids for the transportation contract tomorrow morning. So they're going to know pretty quick whether the 45% that's built into the school budget right now is right or wrong. So that, that could affect this. So the schools are going to react pretty quick. So by the time we meet on the fourth, we should have an idea whether the schools have been able to find anything else.
Is there any possibility that the benefits increase is negotiable?
Well, Brian's going to talk about that in a second. They're, they're working hard, so we're going to spend some time on that.
In my day job, I've occasionally had the opportunity to talk that back a little bit when a health plan comes in with a proposal.
We just had a horrible experience rate this year for all three districts and, and that hasn't helped anything.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody, okay, two things we could do. We could reduce it to three tonight temporarily. We could leave it at four and then know that we're going to talk about this again a week from tonight. So you want to keep it at four?
I'll leave it at four, yeah.
My great, four. Al?
I'll leave it at four for now. I, I'm still struggling with this because I, you know, I, I met with the chief and we had a long discussion and it's very clear that the chief assesses his needs differently than the way I would assess them. We're just, we're, and I'm, I'm starting to noodle through some numbers and I, I, I need to dig in a little more and I'm probably going to ask you for more data.
So can you be ready next Tuesday to truly let us know what that data is you've looked at and what your differences between?
I, I don't know, is, is the answer. It's, it's, I'm trying, the, the chief, you know, tells us sort of anecdotally the challenges that he's facing and I believe every word he says. And, but his brain and my brain work, just work different. And, you know, when I, I hear that sort of thing, I want to understand the frequency of the challenges, the frequency of how often, you know, we are seeing incidences that overlap sufficiently to really cause, cause an effective shortage for a period of time. And that's, yeah, I've got a lot on my plate at the moment, but that, that's kind of, you know, my, my way of looking at the problem. It's just a different way of looking at it than the chief looks at it. So I, I will try, but I think there's going to, it may take a little while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, but to me, frequency is not the only way to look at this. What you've got is a random arrival kind of thing, so these events are randomly.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah. Can't predict when multiples are going to happen and so if you're unprotected in there, that's the real risk.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's it. It's, it's the risk assessment based on the frequency of these random events. Sorry.
What's enough insurance there is the question.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a risk assessment. It's just, it's.
Same conversation we have with dispatch, as far as, you know, how many times you really need that second, third one.
Yep.
Okay, Andrew?
To maybe, just, I'm okay with keeping it at the four for now and then we revisit this next week.
Yep.
And for me, it's just, the way I look at it is, you read this, the staffing study and my view was that this is something that would need to happen over a couple different fiscal years. I, and I, I still feel that way. Now we're talking about a really fine issue of exactly how quickly you go to try to do this in two fiscal years. That sounds like what we're all in some agreement on. So that's the thing I'm kind of wrestling with here and remember that, you know, this, I think it's an important budget cycle because it's, it comes right before the NERI vote. And I, my inclination to try to tighten up the budget a little bit is just to try to preserve some goodwill for the vote that comes to, is it a month or two or three weeks after that?
Month.
Yeah. You know, if the, a perception that we're just spending too much on the operational budget for this fiscal year just contributes to a sense that we're just asking taxpayers to spend a lot of money all in, in a really short period of time. And then we can help smooth that process by just trying to smooth it out a little bit over time.
Okay, so we're going to leave?
I'm sorry. Oh, I had one.
So we're going to leave the four in there for the moment. We will, we discuss it again next Tuesday when we've got more information on the school budgets. But remember, we only have, besides this one, we've only got two more meetings. We've got to sign the warrant on March 18th. So we're going to meet on March 4th, we're going to meet on March 18th. So we're going to have to make the decision, I think, next week, what we want the budget to look like that gets printed in the warrant. I don't think we can really wait to the 18th. We've got to get advisory involved. They're going to, we're going to have to meet with them jointly at some point, so we're going to have to decide, I think, next Tuesday where we are with all this.
So that, that's exactly what I was going to say, just to make sure. The 18th is a hard deadline, based on printing schedules and everything. That's really as far out as we could go. And after the board votes the budget, we then have to, Brian, you know, will need to work with my office to get this loaded into the document for the warrant, which is really a piecemeal process. But, so I just want to make sure we've got enough time to do everything. So, you know, if you scheduled a special meeting between the 4th and the 18th, hopefully it'd be closer to the 4th than the 18th, just to make sure we've got the time. But, yeah, just to make sure we understand, you know, our, our deadlines, that's all.
And we've got to get, we've got to get on the same page with advisory too. So they've got to get, you know, decide when they want to meet, what they want to do to finish this up and then when we two can get together and truly try to come to a meeting of the minds. Okay. All right, so Kristen is in the audience. Is that Trisha? Can you bring her over? Anybody else have anything to say before we hear from her? So Kristen, we're ready for you when you're, when you're over.
Sure, just a quick statement. I just wanted to voice, sorry, Kristen Lavalt, 12 Southwood Drive, speaking as a citizen. I just wanted to voice my support for Chief Newell. We need to trust his expertise and opinion above all, not decide based on skepticism on the ability to fill positions or questioning his analysis on the frequency for these needs. He knows better than all of us. I'm very happy that you've left it at four for now, thank you. And I'm not pleased that we would ask this critical department to not sufficiently stop themselves and secure their appropriate vehicles for their safety and ours. I'm happy that I frequently see our police officers stopping speeding drivers on Parkerville Nine lately, especially with the recent dangerous ICE events, when I explicitly saw them out on Parkerville. I think I'm most upset that we have the nerve to ask the taxpayers to prioritize an exorbitant multimillion-dollar new school if our core fundamental services aren't able to be funded appropriately. We need to tackle that first. So I, I, the last thing I'll say is I also hesitate to ask the schools to cut anything when my high schooler has been sitting in a cafeteria for hours over the last few months because of obviously illness, which is understandable, but a complete lack of substitutes. So admittedly, I don't, haven't looked at their budget. I don't know what they're asking for specifically for line items, but I hope it's in part to address our lack of substitute teachers. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, anything else you want to say?
I would, again, just like to stress that we, that we keep. I would, again, just like to stress that we, that we keep the second crews are in the capital budget. I, I really think that that's important. Like I, like I explained, that that's their workplace. That's how they get around and patrol this town. And it's, I think it's really important that it stays in there.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody want to take a break before we go on to the near rebuilding committee, our near rebuilding project discussion? Andrew?
No.
Thank you both, as always.
Thank you.
You want water?
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to take a five minute recess.
Recording stopped.
Hey, Chief?
Oh, it's all right.
Things could be worse.
Twenty-nine. Okay, so I forgot to bring up, talk about the issues that Brian's having as far as the benefit renewal packages for fiscal year '26. So Brian, can I just turn this over to you and kind of describe where we are? What the effort is being made to try to get that large year-over-year increase down to something that sounds normal?
Yes, so we, we had a SNAP meeting last Friday, I believe it was. And we were a little bit shocked. This is the first time that this has happened where we've had increases, estimated increases, somewhat above what we had thought. This was double what we thought. I don't recall that ever happening. So the, the active plan, our main active plan, Harvard Pilgrim offered us a 24.9% increase for FY '26. That's a lot of money. Obviously, we, we did know that the healthcare costs this year in general are above average. We were shooting for 10 to 12, which is, sounds awful enough. But double that was, that's problematic.
What's that in terms of dollars incrementally or what you'd planned?
It's like $400,000.
More than you had budgeted?
Yeah.
With the 10 to 12 was?
Right.
Was $400,000 less than what you got.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's a lot of money, approaching half a million dollars.
The percentage tax rate increase.
It's a lot. So, we don't have the answer tonight. Obviously, we're frantically trying to meet, have several meetings actually scheduled to see what our options are. It doesn't look like we're going to get Harvard Pilgrim to back that off because they're losing money right now on us. Our loss ratio, and I think Kathy may have mentioned that, is, is all three groups are above the, the, you know, the loss ratio. We're underwater. So that's usually at least balances out if one is. But we have a couple of, in the group, in the unofficial three, three group, you know, the three-member group we have, there's several claims. One's above a million. There's a few that are approaching a million. I don't know the details of what they are. But they're high-dollar claims. And it's my understanding that, and the prescription side of things, which is a lot of money as part of this plan, is what is causing this, this rate increase. So our options are, it's going to be difficult because our timing is, we don't have a lot of time between town meeting. And so we're gonna, you know, we're shooting to get that back down to where we started. There's like five options we're kind of looking at, ranging from joining different groups to implementing some other measures with the plan itself, whether it's higher copays and deductibles, joining the GIC. I don't know if you're all familiar with the GIC. Joining another joint, you know, joint agreement, or perhaps joining other towns to do some self-funding.
Yeah.
Self-insurance, you know. And we still do have an option of going off on our own and getting our own quote. Maybe the district and Northborough can do the same. That may work. I, we're hearing it's probably not going to, but we can go out and see. So we do have some options out there. It's just, it's a little, it's very disconcerting.
How many do, insurers do we have in the total pool?
How many what?
How many insurers do we have and how many people?
Uh, four, four, 400, somewhere right around there.
That's not a bad number to.
It's, it's a good group.
Yeah.
You know, with Northborough and the regionals, of course, approaching 1,000, so that's not bad. So maybe we can explore something, or we're gonna explore some things. But unfortunately, that number is not in tonight's budget. So, nor is it in Northborough's, or nor is it in the regional. And of course, the regional we're connected to, so their number would have to go up too. So our assessment will go up with that.
Okay, so to be clear, as far as what we have in tonight, is the 10 to 12?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
Okay. So we understand that. What he's talking about is not reflected here yet. And it's another $400,000, which is another percent. So that 8.32 goes to 9.32 or something like that. So we're back up, if they can't do anything about this. What is the plan year, from what to what?
It is July 1st to June 30th. And this is the active renewal, the retiree renewal, as you probably recall, from the retiree renewal, is Aetna, and that renews January 1st each year. So we're hearing even the retiree plans are having some pressure and stress. So I, it's a little early to see what would happen with that, but I don't think it's going to be good with that either.
Are you talking with your Northborough counterpart about this now?
Yes.
And are they as alarmed as we are?
Yes.
In a tighter position as we are?
Yes. They're, they're actually, and I don't know if this is official, I just heard that they may be looking at an override next year, partly due to this.
Very motivated to find a.
Override this year or next year?
This fiscal '26.
This year?
Yeah. So they're as much in hot water as we are, maybe more. But it was alarming news, and, you know, the town administrator and myself realize it's not acceptable, so.
Yeah, I've had conversations with the Westborough manager, and she is more than willing to look at, you know, you know, more of a, say, a borough's approach and coming in with, with the group. But Westborough's signing their warrant tonight. So, I mean, there is nothing that they are going to be able to do. They, I think Westborough had a, I want to say.
Sixteen point something?
Sixteen, seventeen percent increase on their side. And, but, but again, you know, my frustration, besides the number, is the fact that this information comes to us.
So late.
So late in the process, and that some of the more, I don't know if Brian used the word draconian, but I'll use it. Draconian measures to try to get the rate down are things that are simply not accomplishable in this short timeframe. The IAC is meeting next week, so we really have to try to put something together to make sure that the, the IAC is going to be on board with this. It's a, you know, it's, it's not a, not a hard vote, you know, but we have always really got them on board with what we want to do before we go ahead and implement it.
Why did we get it so late? Did our broker sleep at the switch or something? Because sometimes the brokers sit on that stuff.
Yeah, I don't know if it was sleeping. I, I.
Sometimes the lands just don't have the number.
I, so, you know, I was, I was out last week. Brian brought me up to speed after, after the, the meeting had happened. I'll be having the conversation this week with the broker. I need to understand how we got from the 10 and a half that they talked to us about putting in the budget, which again, in the past 12 years, all of our, all of our health insurance increases and that have been under 5%, except for one year when it was a seven, a blended seven.
Blended.
Right?
Yep.
So we've done really, really well. This was budgeting double what we normally would consider.
Yep.
And then to have it be double that is, so I need to understand how we got from the 10 and a half to the 24.9.
Yeah.
And without, you know, a notification process or anything in between.
So Brian, when they say our experience, they're, they're underwater. They paid out more than what they were receiving premiums.
Yes.
What, what period are they looking at?
Yes.
The year's nowhere near up. What period are they looking at when they say that?
I think it's a 12-month.
It's a rolling. I think it's a rolling 12 months.
Yeah, it's like a rolling 12-month.
Okay, so it's a true 12 months. It's just not, it does, it's not the same thing as the fiscal year of the plan, obviously?
Correct.
It's not up, okay.
Correct.
And is Westborough, do they go it alone?
I think West.
Yes, Westborough.
I think Westborough's alone.
Yes.
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 Okay, so you think you'll have more information next Tuesday?
I hope so. We're gonna try.
Yep.
Is the group insurance commission not an option?
It's an option. However, it's, they're a little stickly about how you enroll administratively. They're handled very differently. Aetna would not, no longer be eligible. The retiree plan would have to change. They wouldn't accept that now. So there's, there's various things we'd have to really change.
Push back from the.
To get into that.
Sure, sure.
And the one thing is, there's two things. One, you get in there, it's hard to get out. And once you're in, you're there by their rules. So they had a, they have the right to have a mid-year increase and a few, several years back now.
Which has been.
Middle of the year.
Been fairly common. So in other words, just because you think your rate is this.
It's not.
It's not. It can change mid-year.
Yeah.
You know, so if they feel that they, they don't have enough revenues for what they need, they'll increase the rate.
Up the rates.
You know, so we don't have, you don't have that level of certainty with, with GIC.
Yeah, but they're, they're huge and they're stable. That's what I'm thinking.
They actually, we will know their rate is going to be announced for next year on Thursday. So we'll know that.
Well, I'm gonna come to your insurance meeting so we can have fun talking about that.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? I don't know else we can say tonight other than keep our fingers crossed.
Ouch.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian, for the good news. Anything else you want to talk about, the budget, while you're here?
The only other thing is, I have to mark out the improvement of changing our documents.
I think Melanie was gonna poke through that, and I don't know where she ended up. Plant, the liability insurance for buildings.
Yeah, we've, she's been having conversations with, with our, with our rep from, from the insurance company, just to understand, you know, because again, I don't want to change something, but it doesn't give us a real value back on the premium end.
Yeah.
So I've asked them to put something together, which basically says, if you do this, it gives you the best impact and things like that for us to consider.
But just to be clear, the liability insurance, year-over-year, is going down, not up. So that's not our issue.
Correct.
This is health insurance we're talking about that has this absorbent increase.
Yeah, right.
Okay, if it helps. Anybody else having questions for Brian while he's here? Brian, anything else you want to tell us to?
Um, I think that's enough.
That's enough.
All right. Okay. Okay, so Vanessa, can you pop up the NEARIE slide? So while she's doing that, you may recall that I, from one of my chair's reports, said that the second set of estimates was due on February 6th, which we got, two estimates. We then took those, they took those and they basically came to meeting the minds as to what we should use. So the number came down a little bit from the first estimate. We then met with the architects and the OPM and asked them to go further as far as trying to reduce the cost even further, and they did. So this chart, I think, is pretty important. So if you look at the top, the matrix, you're gonna see four different costs. B4, C1, C4, and base repair. Those numbers are what, those first three were three of the 13 different permutations that the NEARIE Building Committee looked at as far as what to do about NEARIE school, and that's the numbers that were assigned to them. So over the summer, those were the three that we kept. So we cut 10 and kept those three. So those are the three that were considered over the summer. So it was basically make NEARIE a four-grade school, but keep it, keep what we have and just add on to it and renovate the building that's there now. That's B4. C1 was to build a new two-grade school with a 305 student enrollment. And the C4, which is the project that's on the table, was to build a new four-grade school with a projected 610 student enrollment. And then the fourth column was one that we just looked at as far as if you just kept the school the way it is and you fixed everything that needs to be fixed, what would that cost be? So, the thing that sold me on C4 was look at the difference between C1 and C4. There is a huge economy of scale to build C4 versus build the two-grade school. Can you go back up, Vanessa?
Sorry.
Okay. Now, focus since August has been on C4. So that number has been really scrubbed. B4, C1, base repair, has not been scrubbed as much because at that point, we had to pick one project, which was the new four-grade school, and then do the, have the architects do the schematic design for that, which is what they have now submitted to the MSBA, and then reprice that one. So that's where the new estimates came in, is for, for C4. So based on what the new estimates were and the work that we did the last couple of weeks to ask the architects to do some value engineering and help us get the cost to the town down further, the specific request by the NEARIE Building Committee, Finance Subcommittee, was to have the first number for the town share be a six. And they did it. They didn't get much below it, but they did it. That number includes the projected reimbursement from the federal government and the state for the geothermal HVAC system. So we're assuming that's going to come through, and that's a large amount of money, that's $5 million. But if it were to come through, at the end of the day, the town would have about a $70 million permanent bond to build the new four-grade school if these numbers hold up through the bid process. The bid process sometimes results in a bid that is really competitive and the number comes down. At this point, you know, we've got lots of things going on in this country, tariffs, whatever, so we don't know. The bid won't go out for another year as far as actually bidding. So we're talking about bidding in April of '26, as far as really knowing what the cost will be. But that's what we've got to take to town meeting. This was what, this is what's going to town meeting, is the C4 number, the 69 million, let's call it 70 million dollars. So that's where we are. My question to the four of you, do you want to have the NEARIE Building Committee come back and go over this in great detail? Or is this enough at this point? Have you seen enough between when they came in December and now to go forward with voting on the decision you're going to take for the special town meeting? Or do you want them to come back and go through this?
I want them to come back. I, I want to note that, you know, I, at the end of December, I sent them a list of questions. Questions have not been responded to.
Okay, so if one wants it, we'll, we'll have it back?
Yeah. I have lots of questions.
Okay. Do you want to ask anything tonight? You want to wait?
Well, so the, the first question I have relates to the $5 million of federal reimbursements. My understanding, and again, I haven't dug into this one yet, is that that's a geothermal system, and does the number, the 70, the 69 million dollar number, does that include a conventional heating system?
Does it include the geol?
Geothermal.
That is geothermal. So we're assuming we're going to get those rebates.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
$1 million is a state, and four of it's federal, so $1 million is already kind of in the bank of the state. So we're not too concerned about that one. The other four, it's from the Inflation Reduction Act. We know what's going on in the federal government right now, so that depends on, and you, you don't get the money until you actually put the system in service, which would be the summer of, of '28, so.
You get a rebate?
Yeah.
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 You get about 34% of the cost of it.
If the rebates don't exist, or which, if they are unlikely to exist, what is the total number that the town is on the hook for?
75 million. And then the article on May 13th is actually going to say, we've got to approve $108 million because that's just how the MSBA works. They will have already voted on our grant that we are relatively confident would be $33 million, but you still have to get the full ability to fund the full cost of it approved at town meeting. So we've got to ask for $109 million on May 13th.
I'll have more questions, but I, I'd like to see them come back. This is an awful lot of money.
All right, so they will come back. So we'll have to figure out how the timing is. You know, so April 7th is town meeting, May 10th is special town meeting. So do you want them before annual town meeting, or you want in between the two?
I would recommend sooner rather than later.
Before, yeah.
Definitely after March 18th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we could have them come in, the first meeting in April, which would be before annual town meeting, barely before, but we could do that.
I, I don't need to see them. I watch the meetings. I understand what they've done, but I defer to others on that one, so I'm fine to see them.
And the point I do want to make is, we have striven mightily to get this cost down. And you, Sam, if you've watched the meetings, you saw what has been said. We have pushed and pushed and pushed. But this is it. This is how far we can push for the moment. So this is the number we're going to, to take to the special town meeting.
Again, worth getting it out there at a select board meeting, maybe broader communication, potentially.
Yep. Okay, so any other questions about this, or we move on? All right, what's next?
You've got two more to answer.
Who is it?
Kristen LeVault and Joanne Pearson.
Kristen LeVault and Joanne Pearson.
All right, so bring them both over.
Who would you like to? Thank you.
Am I unmuted now? Hello?
Joanne first, please.
Yes. Am I unmuted?
I hear you.
Okay, great. I can see the audio thing going. So I do have a question about, you know, the cost here, which I think is crazy and I don't think it will pass. But are the furnishings for, are they all included in this?
Yes.
So furnishings, the nest, the kitchen?
Yes.
All of that, okay.
It's all in. It also includes the cost of the temporary housing for the students for the two years that will be required to build the building.
Okay. And I'm a little confused by saying that was just said about the geothermal and the part that is supposed to be the federal government kicking in, which, who knows? The state, this state is not, you know, this is not a Trump-loving state. Is that the only federal money that would be involved? And I say only, it's a huge amount of money. But is that the only, the geothermal? Because I thought you said that was $5 million, but then you were quoting a different number, I thought.
So there's $4 million from the Federal Inflation Reduction Act that was passed under the Biden administration. Then there's a million dollars available in Massachusetts that we feel pretty comfortable with. That money's funded, it's ready to go. So that one is not the concern that the federal money is.
Right. And is there any other federal money that is involved, or just that amount?
There is no other federal, there's no other federal support or grants that we're aware of at this point.
Okay. Because I also wonder how the state, the state funding, they're part of it, how are they going to be affecting their budget with what the federal government could be cutting to the state in general? And will that affect this grant, any of these grants that they?
I don't know the answer to that, Joanne.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Who else is here? Kristen? Kristen, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. This is a request for a response for the next meeting because I know it's public comment. And my intention is not to start a debate on our federal government, but Kathy, if you and the committee could respond to this, have you, and this is somewhat along the same theme, have you taken into consideration the changes in our federal landscape due to the administration that today seems to be resulting in increasing prices, reduced Medicare, Medicaid, increased unemployment due to federal layoffs, which is impacting potentially, you know, people I know in our town? I, I think this town, your plan, is going to tax out much of the middle or lower-income families, and does that, has that factored into your recommendation, given the landscape has changed severely in the last few weeks? Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Pearson, I think both touched on this. I think we agree that we have to assume that the federal reimbursements probably aren't something we can depend on anymore, given the actions of Doge. And given we just heard prior to this discussion, the dire tax situation we're already in, how is it that we're still proceeding forward with this request? So again, I know you can't respond now, but I'd appreciate if you could, I guess, put forward a position in the next meeting.
So we'll talk more when we bring the full committee in, but this was an agenda item, so we, I can talk a little bit about it. This is not something I don't, I'm not prevented from talking about. As far as what you started with, with all the things going on with the federal government, have we discussed how those might impact this project? No, because it's kind of hard to do that. I'm not even sure how you would do that. We certainly have spent a lot of time talking about the geothermal credit that is available by law right now. This is, the law's passed, it's there. So we have talked about that a lot. We haven't talked about any macroeconomic impact of what's going on in Washington at all. What else do you want me to, to talk about tonight?
I guess my request would be, can you consider that? Because, you know, you mentioned law. At this point, even though it's a law, it doesn't even, you know, again, I don't want to get into a debate, but I would just ask the committee to be prepared. We're gonna, that question you're gonna get, and so better to answer it now. Like, everything we're seeing is that prices are going up, Medicare, Medicaid's going to be decreased, unemployment, we know, is going up already due to federal layoffs. So do we need to reconsider this? Because I can tell you, middle and lower-income families are already stressed out with the tax increase we already have without this. And so are we being insensitive not to even consider that and address it from the committee?
So we certainly haven't talked about the impact of Medicare cuts, Medicaid cuts, et cetera. But we have certainly been sensitive all throughout the process as far as the tax impact to residents. We have, again, tried really hard to bring this project in as least costly as possible. It's just, construction rates are really high. This is $1,000 a square foot for a building, which is crazy.
No, I totally appreciate that, but we have to recognize a lot has changed in the last, you know, three weeks or whatever it's been. And we need to consider that, right? Like, the landscape's changed, and I know that's a lot of work for the committee, but the landscape's changed and that has to come into consideration.
Okay, so I will.
In my opinion.
I'll make, I'll make sure that we, I will pass on your concerns to the full committee and see what they would like to say about that piece of it. But like, again, something's got to happen to the school. The school can't survive the way it is. And if you look, if you look at the fourth.
Right, but it's going for the multimillion.
Hold on, Kristen. Kristen, hold on, let me finish. If you look at the fourth column, base repair, just to fix the building and still have a two-grade school, you're talking 40, $48 million. Is it 40, $45 million? And so if you can get a new school for 70, that's four grades, and then you have a building you can then use for other things in the town that is sorely needed, it seems to me like that is, that's why we decided to go the way we did, and we didn't do this lightly. So we'll, we'll talk more when they.
But the only last thing I want to say, and the last thing I promise, and I'm going to echo Mr. Hamilton, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a statement made several meetings ago, I think, that what's more important, the quality of our education and the teachers or the building we're in? And I, I don't know that we're in such dire straits with the building that we're in. So that's it. Thank you.
I do want to point out one thing is, the Inflation Reduction Act may be a law, but what's important is whether there is an actual appropriation of monies to support that, and that is the, the critical question.
We recognize the tinnitus of what's going on.
No, I'm reaching to the converted.
Okay. All right, moving on. Okay, so let's now do the, oh, this one's yours. So let's talk about establishing a wastewater planning ad hoc committee.
All right, so now, now we can go, drop down into the sewer with me. I actually do have one slide. But yes, you have before you a draft charge for a wastewater study committee. The time has come. We've sort of been poking at this on an informal basis, and we're, we've reached the point where we're going to have to start talking about money and becoming more serious. So I, basically, it's a seven-person commission. We are looking for people with civil engineering, wastewater, and public finance type expertise. I think we have a number of those. Two of the members, up to two of the members would be members of this board, and the commission would, it's ad hoc, it would expire at the end of the fiscal, of the next fiscal year, basically June 30th, '26. basically June 30th, '26. And hopefully, we would be making regular reports to the board. And just to, I know Vanessa is furiously looking for the slide, because I'm sure she's going to find it soon. No pressure. Now, that's not the one. I was like, it's the one that's the Route 9 study thing. Basically, I sort of want to give the committee a vision of what's at stake here, because, you know, we've been struggling with the budget. And I did an assessment where I basically went through every parcel that fronts on Route 9, not including EMC or Park Central. And I basically recorded their assessed value and their acreage, and whether the parcel was developed, undeveloped, or underdeveloped. And I then went through and summed up those various categories. And there are, by my count, 167 acres of land that front on Route 9. Not all of them are zone commercial, but big parts of them are, that are underdeveloped or undeveloped. And those undeveloped and underdeveloped parcels are assessed at about $237,000 per acre. If those parcels and modern buildings along Route 9 are assessed at about $1.2 million an acre. If all 167 acres were developed to modern standards, that would generate $161,000, million in assessed value. That is essentially the 80-20 gap. That would bring us back into the 80-20 gap. And that's kind of, I want to keep, as we talk about wastewater, I want people to keep their eye on the prize, which is that we develop the assets that we have along Route 9 and in the EMC and Park Central areas, because $161 million of assessed value would generate $2.3 million in tax revenue. The only way that we can reverse the tax shift is by aggressive development of Route 9. Otherwise, we are going to continue to see the tax burden shift onto residences. And so that's kind of, that is the impetus for all of this. So with that, I guess I'll ask if there are any questions about the draft-
Al, just to reinforce, that 2.3 million is each year, if that's developed.
Yes, that's each year.
Not at one time.
So the math is 12, a million 202 per acre times 167 minus the current assessment of 237 times-
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Okay. And when you say large tax exempt, that's neck?
No, no. I did not include in the assessment any of the DEC land, any land that I knew was-
Okay, but when you say includes a large-
Oh, it's the Chinese Gospel Church.
Oh, okay.
Which is not, not a secret. But yeah, I did not include neck. I did not include the DEC land. I did not include parcels which I knew were wet. So I'm trying to, you know, sort through what's real. Now, you know, this, I think, does also highlight the need for a rethink of our entire zoning structure along Route 9. But that's kind of, I want people to keep in mind that when we're talking about wastewater, we're not talking about it for the sake, we're talking about it as an economic development tool. So that, I guess the question is, is are there questions about the draft charge?
I don't, I don't have-
Go ahead, sorry.
I don't have any questions about the charge. I think it looks good. I think this is definitely something we should do. The idea is to maybe plant a seed of something that bears fruit later. I mean, this entire discussion we've had tonight just underscores the need to make some longer-term investment to try to have a, you know, remember the comment that Larry Sandberg made at the end of our joint meeting on that Saturday, kind of a depressing comment, but you think about, is there some structural way we can try to stabilize our fiscal situation? There's got to be, you have to do it through growth. And another slide that, you know, when you're talking about this, I think you should add to it, is you had, in one of your other presentations, I think, where you have the map of Route 9 across the state. And what, is it the case that Southborough is the only town between, like, Boston and this one town out in Western Massa-
Goshen.
Goshen.
Yeah, Goshen, Massachusetts. So you drive, like, 150 miles or so.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Before.
And Southborough is the one municipality that doesn't have any form of municipal wastewater?
I went through town by town-
Yeah.
-onto the town websites, and, and looked, and they all have sewer systems.
But they don't all have solely sewer systems. They've got, Westborough's got wastewater treatment plant and sewer, correct?
Well, if you have a sewer system, you have a wastewater treatment plant. Yeah, they're all connected to a wastewater system of some sort.
Commercial system, yeah.
Yeah.
Marguerite, any questions on the proposed charge?
I, I have a question about why each member being a Southborough resident is strongly preferred but not required.
One of the things that we proposed is that Mr. Kundav be a voting member. He's not a Southborough resident. You know, quite honestly, we're looking for people with civil engineering backgrounds that are willing to help.
Looking for real expertise here.
And wastewater expertise.
And wastewater expertise, you know.
Consultant or somebody who is willing to volunteer and help, and they're not a resident.
Not a resident, okay.
The bulk of them, we would hope, would be residents.
I am all for this. This is what the select board should be doing, is things like this, instead of doing some of the minute things that we do, as we know, like the poll hearings tonight, for example. So I'm all for this. This is a major thing. Kudos to Al, kudos to Sam to get as far as this goes. So I think the charge is good. And I hope that, I don't know if June 30th is realistic, but we'll see.
Yep. Two other items before you, you vote. There is a need to do an expression of interest for a one-stop grant, and I'm currently working with Claire Reynolds to do that. So we're going to be pursuing, we'll be pursuing a one-stop grant to hopefully pay for some or all of a comprehensive plan. Heaven knows what we'll actually get out of it, but if you don't ask, you don't get. And then the second thing is, I'm going to ask if the board is okay with this, that you appoint myself and Mr. Stivers as the select board members for this committee tonight.
Can I ask you another?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Just quickly, no, before we vote. Do you want to stipulate that you'd have an interim report and a final report? You've already done a lot of reports, so you could just change the date on it, Al.
I, personally, I believe the key to selling something like this is sort of constant reports.
Do you want to stipulate? Okay, all right.
What does it say now? I can't remember.
Doesn't mention it, I don't know.
No reporting?
It doesn't say anything.
Oh.
I don't know that we got to lock him in, Marguerite.
All right, okay, I'm fine. I just-
We will.
You know where to find us.
Yes, I do.
He can't get me to shut up generally, so.
So you're happy with the charge?
Yeah, yeah. So I move that we approve the charge for the South Borough Ad hoc Wastewater Study Committee.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so we've approved, the charge is here. The recommendation's for seven members, of which up to two could be from the select board. Al has suggested that those two be himself and-
Does it say what, like, length of terms? Oh, so you, we just appoint for the length of the-
Yeah, I mean, this is 6/326.
That makes sense.
And then we probably, then we can renew it if we need to. Okay, so Al suggested that it be he and Sam as two of the seven members from the select board. Anybody have an issue with that? I don't. All right, so Andrew, you want to make that motion?
I move that Sam Stivers and Al Hamilton be the select board representatives on the South Borough Ad hoc Wastewater Study Committee.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, Al, is that what you need?
That's, we're good for tonight.
Okay, so what we really did, you say at least one member, but no more than two, shall also be serving in the select board. Okay, so we did two, okay.
I will try and have a queue of candidates for you at the next meeting.
All right. Okay, good luck. Good luck, good luck. Okay. All right.
I just, can I ask a follow-up question about the expression of interest for the one-stop application? Do you have an idea how much you're going to ask for?
I don't have a saw, I'm, I should, I think it's going to be a number followed by five zeros.
So six figures.
Six figures, yeah.
All right. Okay, the reason I just asked the follow-up question is because we have some smaller one-stop applications that are in the pipeline, right? And we should just all think about how it's all coordinated. And the expression of interest is a simple, it's like 150 character, you put something in. The, the application is much more involved.
Understood. And the application's due essentially the end of May. Yes?
I think, I think just the one piece off of what Andrew was saying, and I'm going to put Vanessa on the spot, and she can feel free to say she doesn't know the answer, but I, I think we need to make sure if we've got multiple projects that we're putting in for the same category, you know, we've tried to avoid that, so we're not competing against ourselves for projects. And we've had this happen in the past where the board has either prioritized what, you know, what is going to go in or not. So I don't know whether this would compete with, you know, this-
It's the Route 9 corridor study is the one that we're-
Yeah, the big one.
I mean, we've already, we've already reached out to Westborough there.
Yeah.
Too. We've already gotten the buy-in. That's already gone through a couple levels of approval there.
Yeah, now, I, I don't know whether, I don't know whether those come out of separate buckets. I would have thought that wastewater and, in particular, zoning are-
Well, here, we want them to be different. We want them to be different, so they-
Understood, yes.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
And let us all know, because I'm interested in that. Okay, so besides those two, right? The, is, you're saying, I thought the only other one was possibly renewing the wave-finding.
Yep, and, you know, we, that's actually the agenda item on the last part of other matters.
So we're about to get to, and that one clearly is not in this bucket. We know that for a fact. So this one would not compete, we think would not compete with that. Is there any other one-stop we're thinking about?
Route 9 corridor study with, which is joint now with, with Westborough and-
Northborough, yes.
Yeah.
And does it be-
And they do have a, they like applications that are supported by-
Regional.
Multiple towns.
Right, okay.
And this certainly has an element of regional to it as well, certainly, wastewater.
Yeah, but there's actually a box on the form, right, I think, where, you know, is this being sponsored by more than one municipality? And this one would not be. I'm not trying to say-
I understand.
-it's not a good idea. I just, just because I've already spent some time working with Leah on the one-stop Route 9 corridor study, just want to coordinate them and not, you know, put in an application without thinking, oh, is this going to reduce the chances of any of these getting selected?
Well, because he's going to put an asterisk and say, by the way, we're the only town in the whole state on Route 9 that doesn't have this. That's why we can't add anybody to it.
Well, that's, that was going to be the opening line, in fact.
Okay, so we're all clear. So you'll determine that we're not going at cross purposes as far as these two, right? Leah's working very hard on the one-stop for the corridor study, so she is very much engaged in that. And then, you want to segue into the next one, the small one? Andrew?
I'm sorry.
Wave-finding. Who put?
Okay, you know, actually, really-
Someone wants to talk about the wave-finding.
You know, I don't have much to say about it, other than this is a, something that we applied for last fiscal year or the year?
Last year.
Yeah, and it was not successful. And then Vanessa told me that there was some feedback about why we didn't get in. There was like one word in the applic-, in the application they didn't really like, which is, I guess, the word vehicular, you know, to the extent they thought it was gonna, this application was going to be about-
Cars?
Yeah, changing traffic patterns and stuff like that. That's not what this is about. This is really about trying to get signs in the, it's in the same vein as what we've talked about, the, like, the history walk, right?
Yeah.
Which is just, you see this in some other towns, little plaques denoting historically significant places in the town, maybe with some QR codes, so that it's a placemaking, you know. And it would be nice if you could get, get this in place before the tricentennial. This is a fairly modest application. What is it, 25, right? And-
25,000?
Yes. And one of the things we were talking about before, now, I would love it if this was just for the money for the signs, right? But it's, it's really for some technical assistance to have a plan for the signs, although we're hopeful that if we did get this funding, the signs wouldn't be all that difficult. And this is in a bucket that, let's see if I can get the name of it right.
It's a small bucket.
Yeah.
Only got $600,000 in it for the host state, is what Leah said.
Yeah. Downtown Initiatives, yeah. So it's something that is on its own track than these other bigger economic development things we're talking about. There's no reason not to give us another shot.
What's the downside? We got it already.
Yeah, and I know, you know, Rob Anderson, you know, who works for the state and has often, you know, bended our ear about one-stop. I mean, he believes we should make multiple applications for different things, although we should probably coordinate them so they don't compete with each other.
Okay, so who's going to see this one? Leah's going to, will do this one too, right? Okay, so you and Leah will work together on this one and just revamp it, get rid of vehicular, or whatever they didn't like.
And if you might remember, you might remember, when we talked about this last year, Vanessa had a good example of another town put together. You could see an example of the kind of deliverable that we were looking for, you know, a nice set of plans showing where the signs would be located and how they would all be connected, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, so we got a plan, right? And you guys will carry on with this one, and we'll get submitted, and what happens?
And also, by way of an update, I think we are still waiting, but hopeful, on the technical assistance, the TAP grant from the NA PC, which I'm still hopeful we will hear back.
You wrote it. It's, it's probably good.
Well, we, a bunch of us wrote it, but, because that would be, I feel like, give us some momentum.
Yeah, that's like a stepping stone-
Yeah.
-for the one-stop.
Yeah.
Okay.
We paid dues to those guys, so we'll get our money back.
All right. Everybody agree, we got a plan? The chiefs are sitting here very patiently waiting for us to get to executive session, so-
Okay.
Is that enough? Okay. All right. Okay, we're going, we actually are going to come back out of executive session, I think. The plan is for now to come back and possibly vote in public on Chief Newell's contract, okay, depending on executive session. So we are going to come back out, but I'm going to go ahead and take the final public comment now, if there is any. Anything, Vanessa?
No hands up.
Tim, nothing? No?
Are we going to review the warrant article?
We're going to, I'm going to actually table that. Because of the time, and trying to get to the chiefs, and, but we will spend a lot of time on that next week.
Yes.
We're going to meet a week from now. So everybody remember, we're off, we're off our normal schedule. Is that okay with you? Okay. All right. Okay, so no public comment, correct, Vanessa? Okay, so the board's going to enter into executive session per MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, and we are going to return to open session for the following: to review and approve executive session minutes from the 21st of January and February 4th, '25, that's exemption seven, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as the chair has determined that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, exemption three. And then third, to discuss police chief contract negotiations, exemption two, which is why we will come back out of executive session if we were to need to do that. Okay? So moved?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Al?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Okay.